Everybody, it's a little past seven and we're gonna get started. And I want to call the meeting to order. Can I have a motion for the acceptance of the agenda?
So moved.
Second by Mr. Danny, second by Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Great, we're gonna start with walk-ins. Are there any walk-ins here this evening? None?
Mr. Chair, I'd only ask that maybe under other business, just in case other people come down, that we have an opportunity for maybe other walk-ins.
Good idea.
Okay, thank you.
Great. So we will, if you can just remind me to-
I will, thank you.
Great, now we have the report of the town administrator.
Thank you. I've attached to your agenda the list of pending items that you see periodically. We've reached a new third page on that this week. So, as always, we're pretty busy. Always happy to answer any questions relative to that in terms of the day-to-day operations of the town. There are a few things that I would like to chat about, however, other than that, if I can have. There it is. Couple of updates. I believe Lorraine put on your table an update on the wind turbine. As you know, the wind turbine was down for a couple of weeks. And as part of our contract with the operator, the town leases the turbine, it does not own it. The town still gets paid regardless of whether the turbine is working or not. When the turbine goes down, once the problem is discovered, it's usually fixed rather quickly, once the parts are in hand. What adds to the delay of the turbine actually being up right away is the diagnostic testing is extremely comprehensive and extensive and takes several days. So, when the turbine's down, just the diagnosis process takes a lot of time. Mr. Bangert prepared this analysis, an updated analysis for the board-
Thank you.
... show that, under the terms of our lease and our contract, Cituit Wind is still required to pay a certain amount to the town regardless of whether or not the turbine's generating any electricity. And as you can see, the town has received payments for the down terminal, down turbine. We actually received a check for $47,000 yesterday. And this is a history of the revenue to date so far from our energy income and our total income from both the wind turbine and the solar array. So we can, you know, get a further update if you like at another meeting from Mr. Bangert. But I think the mechanics of how the solar array and the wind work as far as subsidizing the town's energy bills would be beneficial to talk about maybe at a lighter meeting. But as you can see, it was certainly worth the investment. And again, $100,000 of the solar and $100,000 of the wind turbine revenue is defraying the cost over 25 years of the debt service for the public facilities projects which we're gonna talk about later. But they are certainly doing what they were designed to do. In a related matter to the wind turbine, you have a summary report from Jennifer Keith, the Board of Health Director. I think you're aware that there was another noise testing analysis that was undertaken. As you recall, the conditions under which the noise testing can be done have turned out to be extremely rare. And we've been under this process, I believe, for over 18 months. But another sampling was able to be conducted last week. And you have a summary from Jennifer. And essentially, the ambient noise and the noise testing, the first test resulted in a nine decibel noise rating. The DEP requirements are anything greater than 10, so the noise rating would be under that. And the second one was, drawing a blank spot, another testing, I think, if one of you could see it on the bottom of that, which was well within DEP levels. It's a paragraph-
I think I got it.
Yeah, I just saw it. It's in the, there it is, right there.
This is the hot dog.
That's the hot dog. I'm sorry. I will get it while you're doing your first order of business. Lorraine, did you, I made you do the other one. My bad. I will have it to you before the next meeting, um, next agenda item.
Regardless, both of the testing are coming under the-
Just fell right within. Yep, and I will get that for you. I apologize for that.
One quick comment on the solar stuff. I did speak to Al about this. And, you know, we're making more money than we use. So that's where, you guys remember when we came and we sold it to South Shore Votech, and we're selling these credits to other entities that can buy the electricity also. So even though we're producing more than we use, we're finding ways to get those credits back by selling the credit.
So I just found it. I, again, I was better than I thought I would. Nope, this is not it. All right, I'll just shut up then, because I've obviously had too much coffee or not enough. Moving on. We have had some volunteers in the community come forward to refurbish and paint the gazebo on Cole Parkway. This happened in the last two weeks. We actually had some inquiries last year for people to paint it, but the gazebo actually needed some carpentry work. So I want to really publicly thank Jane Petrowski and a number of volunteers that she's put together, who worked very closely with Kevin Kelly, our Facilities Director, Dave Biagini, our handyman, who have, with great alacrity, made a number of repairs already. And our goal is to have a nice shiny gazebo for July 3rd, 4th, 4th of July observance. The rain has to, or the weather has to cooperate with us. But I just want to publicly thank those folks for stepping up and help us get, doing that. And Kevin, with everything else going on, assisting to do that. So, thank you for that. The other thing that I wanted to talk about was we are soliciting names from three to four members of the community, no more on that, to serve on a very specific subcommittee of the building, Public Building Commission, to assist in picking out colors and paint for the public safety building and the library. So Ruth, and if you could put something out there to send an email to Lorraine or to our office. We want to turn this around really quickly, so if there are folks that have, are interior designers or have a particular interest, it's a very specific charge to help assist on colors and paints for the public spaces in the library and the public safety building. This is common in a number of communities that build public buildings. It gives residents input into the facility that they're ultimately paying for, so we just wanted to make that public announcement. And then the last thing that I wanted to talk to the board about, and I'll have a longer report under Public Facilities, because there's a lot happening there later in the agenda, is that in the past year, the town and town officials have sponsored a number of informational forums for residents. And it's not really common in municipalities to do this, them this frequently, but we get so immersed in the day-to-day that it's hard sometimes to look back and see what we've accomplished. So I just wanted to share with the board that in the past year and a half, we've had a public forum for all the developers and building officials working in town to see how the development and building process with our Conservation Planning Board, Board of Health and Building Department, can be approved and to solicit their feedback. The Facts Coalition has had a number of public forums to solicit input from residents and educate them and provide resources for the opioid epidemic. We sponsored an informational meeting on sea level rise and climate change with the town of Marshfield and Duxbury to start dealing with the changing sea and that impacts. We had a public, open meeting to solicit folks for boards and committees so they could get to know about town government and encourage them to participate. That was extremely successful. And the next one we have, and we had the Coastal Erosion and Damage Storm Assessment last week, which I'm sure board members may talk about later under New Business. We also have one more coming up, which is from the Atlantic White Shark Conservancy to help educate residents about the migratory paths and the locales of great white sharks in the area along Massachusetts Bay from the Cape to Gloucester and Cape Anne. So that's about more than half a dozen forums that we've put together in an effort to get information out to our residents and citizens and businesses. And I was thinking about it yesterday and thought, you know, we sort of just do these things and don't reflect back. But we hope to do more, and if folks have an interest in a particular area of town business or town government, that we'd certainly entertain the opportunity to have an educational forum around it. And that's all I have to say.
And the only thing I'd probably add is if people had ideas of what they wanted to learn about, if you sent it to our office or to the administrator, we'd more than happy to hold a forum on those areas, too. I just want to comment real quick on the information that Tricia gave us on the wind turbine and the solar array. I think when we started this program, we were hoping that we would make about $250,000 on each program. And per the numbers we have here, and I don't know, this must be on a fiscal year, so it says through May, it must be through June that it would end, I would guess.
Correct.
So through May, we've already made $307,000 on the wind turbine, and through May, we've already made $284,000 on the solar array. So both of those are exceeding our expectations. And as Tricia said, we've allocated $100,000 from the combination of them to go towards the building and the capital plans that we're looking for. So before we move on, does anyone have, I mean, there's a lot of items on her list here. Is there anyone that, any one in particular, that anybody wanted to ask Tricia on or get an update on or anything? I know a lot of them are coming up on future meetings, but if you see anything there, because she can't go through all of them, there's too many. All right? So why don't we move on, and we will talk about a petition. Is this, who's doing this? National Grid or?
Yeah, National.
National Grid?
We may ask some people.
How are you?
Good, yourself?
Good. If you could just state your name, that'd be great.
Bill Matthew, yeah, for National Grid.
Hi, Glenn Zilew.
Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Glenn. What do you got?
Okay, under an item for, looking for a poll petition. Poll number one, Conservation Way at the intersection of Colonel Mansfield Drive. We were out discussing this with a couple of the homeowners out there today, and we've come up with a few other alternative solutions to the problem. So it needs to have some further discussion, so we'd like to know if we could possibly table this request for this evening.
Sure. Before we do that, though, is there anyone in the audience who's here for this item? Yes, sir. Do you have any comments or any? You were there at the meetings today and went over it with them?
Yeah, we actually met up at the property about 5:00 PM, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just waiting to see if there's any alternatives that they can come up with based upon.
And this is typical. Anyone on the board have any?
I just asked why. James Eletra told me that currently the guide wire is on an oak tree right now, so they have to, you know, let that go.
It's a construction practice that's no longer accepted by National Grid. We want to sustain our equipment with our own equipment. Either a guy wire or stub pole, which is another pole, and a guy wire up against it to sustain the straightness of the pole.
Just reading through, it said something about, and maybe this is just a boilerplate type of request, something about going underground. So were you exploring the idea of going underground there, or is this just something in our backup that appears every time a poll-
It could be, because in this particular area, it's all overhead, overhead construction, and it's not an option right now for us to even consider something.
I know you said you're from National Grid. Are you also from National Grid?
Yeah.
Okay. I noticed the petition is both from National Grid and Verizon. Are you jointly petitioning for this?
Cituit is the National Grid maintenance area. We maintain the poles in Cituit. We each have different areas that we maintain the poles in. Cituit is our area. So we are the custodians for the pole, and Verizon attaches to it, and we communicate with one another anytime we have to do work.
Reason why I ask is, I understand that, but reason why I'm asking is because I think we have a lot of poles that are sistered still. My understanding is not National Grid's problem, because they've put the poles in, they've attached their wires, but it's usually Verizon who has yet to come out to the town to switch over the wires. And one of the biggest issues I have is granting another poll petition until the sistered poles are actually taken care of. And that's why I asked if you're with Verizon, because I want Verizon to come, so we can give Verizon to fix the poles. I really am against creating more poles until Verizon deals with the issue. And I know, because they're all over the town, we're not dealing with one or two. We had like 10, 15 of them. So I'm just saying upfront, I don't, you know, I have issues granting more poles until Verizon deals with the issue of removing the other ones. This has been going on for seven years.
So as custodian of the poles, are you the one that would do what John's talking about, or does Verizon come in and do it?
Well, it's our maintenance area, but we can't do anything with the old pole until they transfer off to the new pole.
Right.
So even though it's our maintenance area, we're custodians for the pole, we still have to wait for them to take care of that.
Because the service is still on the old pole.
Correct. And a rule of thumb is the last one on, the one to remove, even though it's our maintenance area, they would, they should remove the old pole.
Do you have contact with Verizon?
Yes. I don't, but I can get someone to, I'll let my media supervisor know that there's an issue in town with that.
Just, this is more to our DPW director. Kevin, do we have an idea of how many poles that are still sistered?
Four to 15. I, Al did a count on it. I can look into it.
That's all. Thank you.
This is kind of a specific question, but we had had a temporary pole put on in Common Street that was gonna be switched out to a pole, and it was all approved. But I noticed the temporary pole's still there with the power running to it, and this appears to be going on the ground. It's still sitting there. Just, are you familiar with that?
No, I'm not, no. Give me a location.
Yeah, yeah.
Common Street?
On what street?
Common.
Common Street?
Yeah, it's still a temporary, it looks like the pole's in place, but it's been sitting there, it's been quite a long time.
Is it a regular utility pole?
It is. And there's a, there's a short pole there with the power running to it. I don't know the exact address, but-
Do you know, do you know what the intent was?
Wheeler.
Wheeler in Common, yeah.
Wheeler in Common.
Yeah, just outside of our Wheeler Park.
Okay. We'll take a look at it and see what the story is.
Thank you.
You don't know what it was servicing, do you?
It happened back in, I think, December. There was an issue about ground freeze, and so I'm not sure whether, I know that they put the-
There was a fire, remember? And it used to come under the guy's yard.
I can get the main floor.
Yeah.
Yeah. Looks like it runs underground there, but it's still hooked up to the temporary pole.
Okay, we'll take a look at it.
Okay, so do we need a motion to postpone that, or we just? I don't think we need it. So we'll just postpone it, one is to talk to Lorraine when you get it, just to work out, anything you can work out, make the neighbors happy.
Okay.
It saves us having to, you know, barter about it here, so.
I just need the name and address of the resident that's here.
Sir, what's your?
Lawrence Mopple.
But just say your name and address.
James Eletra, F A L E T R A, Two Conservation Way.
Thank you. Great, so you guys-
We have, we have one more poll here.
Yeah, on Maple Street. It's not on your agenda this evening, but we were told that both these poles are gonna be on the agenda this evening.
I don't think we can do it because people-
That's fine, but that's, that's one of the items we gotta double poll. It's kinda on a bad kid, was it an accident? There's a couple, two or three times this pole's got hit.
Okay.
So I'm gonna address that with my supervisor. And so who do we have to say about this?
Does that have a separate plan number?
You wanna show a picture of, show what you've got?
This is what I have, I don't know.
We're in queue right now, but I don't know when this is gonna seem. Can I keep this up?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
So we'll get that on the agenda when you come back for the other one.
Okay.
Mind if I give her a telephone number after this?
All right. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is a discussion of the 4th of July observance with Chief Stewart and Chief Murphy.
Copies will be updated, so we'll pass off to the citizens of updated regulations and guidelines.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks. Great, so I guess the start would be, are there any changes from the way we did on last year?
Pretty much the same. Again, we're gonna allow small cooking camping fires. We will not allow any bonfires whatsoever, but the, to have the family fund, the request from the citizens, it makes sense to again allow the cooking camping fires. There are some parameters we set in there, basically a three-foot wide parameter surrounded by beach stone. We ask they use good clean firewood for the smoke aspects, so they don't smoke everybody out around them. Not to use pressure treated wood, painted wood, anything with nails, and especially no pallets, because that type of wood, the smoke will get into the kids that's sitting there cooking marshmallows, whatever they're doing and having fun. We don't need pressurized wood or painted wood to be used. So we ask they use good clean cut firewood. Also, the height restriction is about 16 inches high for the wood. We also ask they keep it 75 feet from any structure. The good news is low tide is at 7:00 PM, so there's plenty of room for everybody to have fun, go on the beach and have a campfire away from, away from the home. So good sort of luck out there. And then, you know, just somebody's gonna be responsible for the, for the fire. Somebody over 18, hopefully a homeowner there that's responsible sees the kids and somebody's down there watching it. And just make sure that after it's done, to put it out and safely make it back the way it was. They don't want nails and the next day, people walking on the beach. So we ask that they clean up, not only the wood, but also, you know, other debris that might be in the beach, so they keep their beaches clean and safe for the next day. So overall, just campfires will be allowed, no bonfires. And we'll be around, we'll have extra personnel on both in-town, San Hills, Egypt Beach and mine, and also a presence down in Humrock, extra ambulances, apparatus out there. So we're preparing all our personnel and our vehicles to have a busy night.
Great. And that's for all beaches like you mentioned?
All beaches, and all we ask, we want everybody to have a good time, have a safe family holiday. We just want to make sure it's safe for everybody.
This was instituted three years ago. We're doing away with the bonfires, and I gotta tell you, last year was probably one of the best July 3rd enforcement we've had, not just in Humrock, but up here. And we had near 100% compliance from the residents. So, you know, they've, they're bought into what we're telling them, that this is a safer celebration, a better way to do it. You know, we were able to manage the crowd in Humrock on July 3rd and disperse a group of, you know, a few thousand kids and get them out of there before 11 o'clock. And that saved us a lot of aggravation after midnight.
Comments from the board?
I just have one, Mr. Chairman. Whose role is it to enforce the cleanup? Because I often will walk the beaches on July 4th, and it's, they're a mess.
Should be the residents that have their families and friends down there, they have a campfire, whatever they're doing. I would think it would, hopefully they would actually take the time to clean up the beach and make it safe for their family and friends the next day.
You're right, though, it is a mess. I know Kim Peters picks up Peggy, and you guys probably pick up Sam, you know.
So we ask the residents to help with that.
Okay.
You know that they could try to make sure that that evening and next day, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Great, thank you, guys, for great work. These will be going out to-
Yeah, we're gonna get these out, we'll probably print it off and get them in the stores, beach associations, the waterfront homes, so we'll start that push.
They get hand-delivered by Police of Fire in the oceanfront homes.
Chief, Chief Stewart, where can we get that shirt? I like that. The spit?
Yeah.
I like that.
The golf course was making them up. That's good.
He's undercover. Okay, moving on to the third item on the agenda is a special event for Cituit Harbor Antique Car Show, so all year, and-
Frank Nash?
Oh, Frank, how are you?
Good evening. Good evening. So Frank Nash is here with me. He's part of-
More support.
More support. He is the car show. Every Thursday during the summer, Antique Cars group out at Lighthouse, at the Lighthouse. And the Business Association in the harbor thought it might be a nice idea to get them to come down Front Street a couple nights this summer, to try and generate some, some crowds down on Front Street. So what we're looking to do is the third Thursday in July and August, July 23rd and August 20th, we were looking for permission to get part of Front Street blocked off to vehicular traffic and have the cars set up on the street for, you know, two or three hours, just to generate some traffic down there.
Does anyone, I can comment, or anyone else?
What do you mean by block off Front Street? That's the whole entire, you know, like-
No, just the section of Front Street we're thinking of from Otis Place to Beale Street. Block it off to car traffic and have the antique cars parked on both sides of the street there. Just create a little display area for the cars.
I love the idea. I just don't like the location. I'd love to do it behind a whole parkway somewhere where we wouldn't have to shut off Front Street completely on a Thursday night. But I, I love the idea if we could find just a better place to put it. It was my initial thought, I don't know what you guys were thinking.
Good.
I think the chief said the same thing in his comments in terms of shutting down Front Street. So I don't know if you've thought about other areas where we could-
Well, we did, and we thought Front Street would be more appropriate for, to generate some interest, foot traffic to the restaurants, shops that are down there. And the car enthusiast thought the same thing. They'd rather be down on Front Street where there's, tend to be more people than out in the parking lot.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, sure. So that was our thought.
What about somewhere in between, like between, like where Reva and that area there have that whole block where, like last year where the music tent was during Heritage Day, you'd still sort of be on Front Street, but you'd be able to allow Front Street to be open.
We're open-
That might work.
More visibility than being hidden on Cole Parkway, but I don't know how everybody feels about that. But I mean, you're only talking a couple of hours for that area, you know?
You've got the same issue of blocking off a street.
Yeah, but at least it wouldn't be Front Street.
Right.
You know? Front Street, I mean, it's, it's kinda-
No, no, it's, you know, the, what reminded me of closing off Front Street was what happens on Halloween, where the town comes in and shuts off entire section of Front Street-
Right.
For trick-or-treaters. Seemed to be not a big issue.
And it's kinda crazy, but-
Halloween is. I don't think this would be as crazy, do you, Frank?
No, no.
I don't, I don't think it'd be that crazy.
Two weeks ago, we were down in Intesca Beach, they closed off the entire boulevard.
I can't.
How many cars do you anticipate?
Depends on the evening, but maybe 50. Fifty-five zero.
I think it's a great idea. You know, I'm just, I'm kinda concerned like Tony is, as far as shutting down Front Street completely for the two hours.
I can see why you want Front Street, you want the exposure's nice, and you guys used to do it, crack room, hall room, isn't it?
Yes, well, we actually used to meet at Cole Parkway years ago, back in the early 70s, and then over to St. Mary's after that.
Right. I know that's what you're trying to do, but do you think that little service road between Front Street and Cole Parkway is still under Cole Parkway? It's too bad Front Street wasn't wider, you could line up the cars on your side, on Front Street parking. But it's, well, and, and I like old cars, but how do the other merchants feel another night, and, you know, maybe losing business for a little while?
I think they'd be gaining business. I mean, we have the support of the association, it's 70 odd members, not odd, but 70 members.
Not all of them are.
Well, I, I've got a few thoughts on it. One is, I was wondering, what if you were able to shut down Otis and Allen, so you have vehicles kinda going kitty-corner or, you know, kind of at an angle, so at least you're in the middle of both Front Street from the north and from the south. Another thought I was thinking about is, although the parking lot across from TK's, not TK's parking lot, but the private one, it's a great lot, to at least try to see if there's a possibility. And then, of course, Cole Parkway, seems to make sense if you were to close off the actual Cole Parkway near the stores. The only thing I would say is, I might be willing to go for one to see how it goes, because, I mean, the bottom line, it's gonna happen, is as many people as you say will appreciate it, we're gonna hear back from people, we're gonna say we'd hold on and shut it down. I mean, it happens, Paul.
Sure.
So I'm like, I'm not, you know, but I think it's a great opportunity, a great event, to try to bring people down to see him, because I remember when they were at event, to try to bring people down to see him, because I remember when they were at St. Mary's. So, I mean, I'm open to that, but I was just thinking, you know, obviously, it's a main thoroughfare, people could go up to Hazel, I guess, to get around it for the time.
Or cut through Cole. Yeah, cut through between Reva and Paradise Home.
I wonder if you could put it in St. Mary's parking lot and make people park at Cole Parkway so you'd have to walk.
It kinda defeats our purpose, what we're trying to do though.
You'd have to walk down Front Street to get to the front.
Brings it away from the stores.
I never thought about the one night.
Just one night to try it, see how it goes.
What my intent was, you know, I'm here, we're asking for two nights and hopefully next summer, we ask for three. We missed out on this one. But one night would be fine.
The other thought is, you might try the summer, but then you might wanna try a spring or a fall, because during the summer, there tends to be a lot of people, especially Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. But during the fall, it's good for the business, because things tend to be, or the spring tend to be a little late.
Problem is, fall at night, it gets darker early. Typically, at sunset, we're out of there. You know what, I'm gonna ask, oh.
Is there a reason why you feel the parking lot spaced down by the bank on the edge of the harbor isn't a good space? It's still a butt's Front Street.
It's away from the businesses.
So, you think that's too far away?
Yeah, that's-
It would still be frontage.
Chief, I know you wrote a little note on it, I didn't know if you had an opinion on it.
Anytime you shut down Front Street, it creates a problem for emergency response on any given night down there, they're up there with a medical aid and any one of the establishments down there, you get fire apparatus through Cole Parkway when you're routing other traffic, who there can be problematic. You know, you can run them down Otis or Allen Street, but either those, when you're routing traffic up those streets, can be problematic, you know. We can make anything work down there. You know, if there was an alternative, if Cole Parkway worked, that would've been great. If the board's inclined to let it do between Otis and Beale Place, it might've worked.
Okay.
It's a fairly short stretch of Front Street we're looking for.
Yeah, I mean, the problem is, is Front Street.
I understand.
What's the time again?
Six to eight.
We were thinking six to eight. Frank said the cars actually get there a little earlier, so maybe five to eight.
You picked Thursday night, not the first Friday night of the month.
First Friday's busy enough, you know, so just-
And Thursday nights generally are the nights we meet at the lighthouse.
That's right.
And it's easy to divert them. I know we were thinking about trying it out on Front Street for one time, but what if we tried it on Cole Parkway one time and see what the impact was on the stores, see if you still got the traffic that you're looking for, if we're getting people down there, assuming that they're not gonna just look at a car and get back in the car and go home.
Sure call.
When you're saying, Tony, when you're saying Cole Parkway, are you referring to it an area of the street? There are completely behind the stores.
I think anywhere would be better than Front Street in terms of emergency response time. I mean, it'd be beautiful to put it on the ring around the water by the bandstand, is where I think you'd have the easiest, easiest way to walk and look at all the cars and the biggest area.
Walk it off, pass it along the borders.
No, well, they can, I mean, you have parking spaces still available, but if you put it along the-
Our intent, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I don't know, where do you think Cole Parkway would work best?
Right along the strip, go down there some hot summer night, Cole Parkway all the way through. There aren't many open spaces unless you go like where Morris at, at the end, across San Maria's.
What you could do it is if you shut down actually Cole Parkway itself, the road directly in front of CVS going down to Rocco's. The thing I might suggest is, is what Marty had mentioned about shutting down that extension of Otis Place in front of Reva's. So, what you're doing in essence is, they're still in the center portion of the Front Street, except they're on the backside of it.
So, block that whole thing?
Just block it off. And it won't impact, it won't impact the parking. All it will do is impact the roadway.
Travel.
They got it. It may impact four spaces on the side of Reva's, but aside from that, you're gonna get the same bang for people down there.
So, that whole block, basically from Rocco's all the way up to Front Street, that area there.
You know, from like the-
But you'd stay off of Front Street.
From like-
That's what I said in the beginning.
Where, what's his name? The beach shop, Chuck. From Chuck's Place, along, along the laundromat, CVS, Rocco's, Dunkin' Donuts, all the way around the corner. You're on the road, so you're not taking parking away. So, I mean, obviously, some people are gonna complain of taking parking on Front Street. But here, you're not gonna do that. Second, you keep Front Street open. Third, you're pretty much as close as you are, except you're just not on Front Street, you're on the backside of the buildings, but you're also on Front Street, 'cause you're wrapping around on Otis Place, right to the corner.
Right, so you'd be from that corner all the way around, give you quite a big empty area. And you'd still have the exposure to Front Street for people to see it.
Just a thought.
But literally, it wouldn't be on narrow Front Street, you know, it's-
It's part of the charm of what we're looking for, though.
Well, you knew you were gonna run into this.
No, I didn't.
Now, you're gonna put 50 cars between Otis and Beale.
Well, you're gonna park them-
Diagonally, probably.
Pretty close and diagonal.
Yeah.
And then you still have the road to go around it if you had to.
If you had to, correct.
I would say, I mean, my inclination would be to see, try that once, and if you don't get the response that you want, then we can come back and look and see if, if Front Street's the only answer. I think that's the least-
Of an impact.
We're still blocking off a street.
Yes.
Yes. And those parking spots would be gone for that night, that part of the night.
In front of Reva's.
Across from the Reva's door.
So, you probably need two police officers, right? One at Brook Street or that entrance there and one at Otis?
Are there already patrolmen on duty during the summer, where we wouldn't need a detail, 'cause it'd already be there?
I don't think someone patrols that street, right?
There'll be one officer assigned to the house.
Special, I think, yeah.
You're probably gonna have to hire another detail for the other end.
So, one detail?
I'll help you out with the officer who's on duty. But I think on the other end, you might need a detail.
Okay.
Comments from the board?
Going down Otis around Cole Parkway, is that the suggestion for the first time?
Yes.
Otis Extension around the corner.
All the way to the beach shop?
To beach shop. And depending, you might need to go a little further, up to, at least, the only thing is this, you gotta be careful, 'cause once you get past the beach shop, you got Situate, Situate Federal, and they don't close until 5, 6. So, that's all I'm saying, you might wanna talk to them, 'cause they got the drive-through.
Right.
Okay. That's all.
Anyone in the audience have any comments?
Do you need a motion?
We gotta adapt it.
It's a new event, so you gotta vote.
I'll move to provide a special event for Situate Harbor Antique Show for, what date would you prefer?
July 23rd.
July 23rd, from 5:00 PM until 8:00 PM on Otis, I think it's Otis Place Extension and Cole Parkway up to and including, I forgot, it's the Conway Building, I think, but I'm not sure what the building is. Up to, up till Situate Federal Credit Union.
Up to their-
Situate Federal Bank.
Federal Savings.
Savings.
Right up to their driveway.
Correct.
Got a motion by Mr. Cane, second by Mr. Harris. Chief, do you have any last comments before we vote this? Is that a better option for you? Is that doable?
I think the overall is a much better option.
Any further comments? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? So, it's unanimous, 5-0. And then, why don't we, you know, we'll talk or we'll see around town, unless now, but we'll probably break it down and all.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Great idea, thank you. The next item is a special event for the Knights of Columbus Carnival. Phil Limbacher.
Good evening. You know?
Seems like I was just here doing this.
Twenty years.
I had fewer gray hairs.
You weren't as tan, though, the last few times I've seen you, Bill.
I owe that to Widows Walk.
I was gonna say, I think you've been out golfing, which is good.
I feel a moral obligation to support the local golf community.
So, your name, Mr. Limbacher, and your address?
Bill Limbacher, 317 Gannan.
Great, what do you want?
Looking for special permit approval for the Situate Knights of Columbus Carnival.
You know what, is the chief, Pam, can you just have the chief's ticket sent to you real quick?
Same, Bill, same as it has been the last few years?
Same as the last 40. I think I've been doing this for 43. And it's pretty much the same.
60, 30 yet?
I'm not sure that's how it's-
Was it 63?
I thought Mark's in 62 on street, I counted another, Mark, I don't know, I counted it wrong.
It's a historical event. What, any comments from the board, same exact thing? Chief, I just wanna, the carnival, same thing as last year, did we have any problems last year that you're aware of?
No, we didn't have any problems. I've spoken to the Knights in regards to the amount of details and we're gonna scale back a little bit on the details. The last couple of years, the crowd hasn't been what it used to be and I think we'll safely do that. We have the power, we have the control side.
Fireworks, Friday, Saturday night at the same.
Friday, Saturday night, 10 o'clock, St. Mary's. Same operators we had last year. We try to rotate the operators so that you get a different set of rides and a different set of games.
Motion?
Please.
Move to approve the Knights of Columbus Carnival to be held on July 14th through the 18th in Cole Parkway. Set up day is July 13th, 2015.
Point of order, usually when the board approves special events, they're contingent upon all the requirements made in the application by the department heads, so if Mr. Chair, if the motion can be amended, that would be great. 'Cause they're pretty detailed in this, nothing new, but-
Move to amend the motion, subject to review of all the department heads and approvals, the necessary approvals.
Second by Ms. Curran. Any further discussion from anyone? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? It's unanimous, 5-0. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Again, that's July 14th through the 18th. Nice, Chief.
Yeah, it's just, you know, all the-
Okay, so the next item that we're gonna do is discuss the new annual appointments. I don't know that we'll vote tonight, but I know we'll meet a lot of the people that are applying for the different committees. So, let me get my- Okay, so we'll go in the order that Lorraine put them in here. So, is Ashley Davis here? Okay, we'll come back and see if she comes. Oh, wait, was she?
Do you wanna use this, Tony?
Yeah, I printed that out.
Isn't there someone, Brian, like, I highlighted the sheet for you.
So, is it just the new?
It should be, no, I think it's-
I'll be here at 8:00, he was cold enough to show up till late.
Yeah, let me see, what time is it? 7:40.
Just print it, does it?
So, Lorraine, do you want them to go in order, the spreadsheet, or how it appears in their computer?
I highlighted one for each one, they're all ready.
Okay. I printed more down. Good.
This is due for today, so.
Okay. So, we'll come back to Brian. So, is Lori Hall here?
Yes.
Hi, Lori, come on up. Have a seat. So, I guess what we're looking for is just tell us who you are, what you do, why you wanna do it, in a minute and a half.
Lori Hall, I live at 5 Clap Road. I've lived in Situate for about 32 years now and I think it's about time I try to give back a little bit. I'm seeking appointment to the Beautification Commission. I have planted and watered the island garden at the intersection of Clap Road and Booth Hill Road now for more than 10 summers. I'm an avid gardener and I think I can contribute to the committee.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Lori, you're a great asset, so.
Great, Lori, well, you know what it's all about and that commission does great work for almost no money, so we appreciate all your effort and labor. And we'll either vote some of these tonight, if not at our upcoming meetings.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Elaine Zambari? Did I complicate your last names? No, it's perfect, good.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Great.
My name is Elaine Zambari. I live at 25th Avenue here in Situate. I've owned that property and paid taxes on it since 1978 for the past 15 years. I haven't lived here, but have had my daughter living in the house, so I've had vested interest in Situate all along. And I'm very interested in giving back to the community. I'm now retired from my full-time position. The past 15 years, we're in Minnesota, lovely, warm climate, and now I'm back here with the snow. So, but my son-in-law shovels, so that's all good. And I would like to give back. I'm a registered nurse and I'm a licensed attorney, so I would like to participate in the Board of Health.
Great. Any questions or comments from the board?
Elaine, I just thought I'd start somewhere. You're interested, if not Board of Health, something else?
Yes, there was two, there were three things I expressed interest in, the Commission on Disabilities and the Council on Aging.
What kind of law, what did you do?
Elder law. And then I've done, when I was working at Mayo Clinic, it was compliance with regulatory issues.
You're way too overqualified for this.
That's because it's a non-paid position, doesn't matter whether you're overqualified or not.
Any other thought? Great. If there's no other questions, thank you for coming in and put a name with a face and we'll vote it, you know, today or tomorrow, or the next meeting.
Okay, great, thank you.
You preferred the Board of Health?
Pardon?
You preferred-
Preference with the Board of Health, yes. Thank you.
And is Patricia Lambert here?
My name is Patricia Lambert. I live at 14 Alexander Place and I have been appointed to the Adaptive Building Reuse Committee. And Lorraine asked me if I would be interested in the Bylaw Committee, and I am very interested. I'm a retired librarian. I've worked extensively in municipalities, so I'm familiar with how important bylaws or laws are and that we keep current, we keep moving forward and make sure that we're paying attention to our current bylaws as well.
I know that there's, we always talk about this, whether someone should be on two different committees or not. Of course, sometimes there's vacancies where it's helpful to do that and sometimes it's too much. So, we can take that into consideration when we talk about voting. So, you're currently on the Adaptive Use Committee?
Yes.
And that's gonna take up a fair amount of time?
Yeah, I would think so. It sounds very interesting, yeah.
Great, and what drew you to the Bylaw Committee?
Lorraine had asked me if I would like to do that as well.
Great.
And I spent the last week-
What's the status of that committee, Lorraine? How many people are you on with that?
On the Bylaw Review Committee?
Yeah.
We have one. We need three.
We have three in total.
Patricia would be two.
Okay. Any questions for Patricia?
Patricia, with the Bylaw Committee, I mean, I think we need someone who's a self-starter to really get some engagement going there, so we can start reviewing some of our bylaws.
Is that a role that you'd be willing to play?
Yes, I'm much a self-starter. I actually, during the snowstorm, I downloaded the master plan, I read that during all of the downtime of six weeks. So I read that in all the bylaws, and I've had lots of thoughts and conversations with myself and other people concerning those two major issues, so...
What two major issues? I'm sorry?
The master plan and the bylaws, which go hand in hand, actually.
Yeah.
Quite a bit. So, and I know that the master plan is a little bit out of date, and some of the bylaws always happens, tends to fall out, so... Familiar with that with all the municipalities I've worked in before, which is always trying to keep up.
Great. And which one did you work with before?
I, what municipality?
Yeah.
I've been in Cohasset, Halem, and Dedham.
Any other questions? Anybody else? Great, well, thank you for coming in.
Thanks for having me.
Obviously, I mentioned you a couple of weeks ago, but we'll figure out what's going on with this as well.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks for participating.
Thank you.
David Friedman.
Hello.
How are you, David?
I'm very good. My name's David Friedman. I live at One Thirty-Nine Tac Factory, and I'm interested in the Waterways Committee. And I've been living in Situate about twenty-two years, I've been on the water about ten years. I served on the Capital Planning Committee for, I think, four years or five years, and then the Advisory Committee with Tony for three years. And it's been eight or nine years since I've served in town and interested in getting involved again, and I love the water. The Waterways Committee is interesting to me, because there's a lot of money that goes through the Waterways Committee, and I'm sort of a budget guy, and want to make sure the money gets spent well and efficiently, and I'm very interested in what goes on in the river and the harbors, and just a personal interest of mine that I've developed over the last ten years or so.
Great. Any comments? I know, I was on advisory with David, and he did a great job, and like you said, he's very budget-conscious and has good business sense, and always added a lot to that committee, so I'm sure you do the same here. And you're a voter as well?
Yeah.
A member of...
Avid, the yacht club.
Yacht club.
Yeah.
Great. And no, your business isn't affiliated with this or anything?
Not at all, not at all. I'm an inland business. I run a pressure washing company that gives me some flexibility on time, and I spend a lot of time on the water in the summer.
Well, this is a popular...
No, just, I was just going there. I just counted about five new applicants there.
Yeah.
Vacancies currently, unless someone does renew.
My understanding would be I would be a, not an adjunct, associate member for any number of years, I'm not sure, just to, and I've been observing the committee over the last several months, and interested in the way it operates. So I guess I'm applying to be an associate member.
Well, you just apply, and then we figure it out, because no one is, no one is guaranteed a renewal.
Right.
You know, it's, you know, it's up to us to point whoever we want.
Right.
But that could be the case. If that was the opening, would you be willing to...
Absolutely, absolutely. Meetings, nevertheless, whether I'm an associate member or real member or not, but, because I'm interested.
Patricia, I don't, I hate to put you on the spot. Can we talk about associates now, or do you want to talk about that later on? Associate members for committees. Correct?
So, Maureen and I were just talking about that. So, relative to the Waterways, it says Waterways Commission and Associates. And that there's no further description, no terms, no limited number. And last I checked, there were twelve associates, which raises some concerns, and also, we looked at other boards and committees in town that have associates, and what's permitted by the statute, if that's the only thing that addresses it when the charter and the bylaws are silent. So technically, the board appointing associates doesn't exist on paper, except for the vague reference for Waterways that says Waterways Commission Members and Associates.
Lorraine, could you give us, so Waterways, I see Dick there also. Waterways has how many members? Nine members. Which one is the harbor master?
Nine members, there's one opening.
Nine members, one's the harbor master, there's one opening.
No, there were, well, it's up to you, because you're voting on a decision of, do the members have to be Situate residents? If you decide against that...
Dick, one second.
There's one vacancy.
There's one vacancy.
Dick, I have a vacancy, so that one position is vacant.
Okay.
There are also current members that would like to be renewed.
Right.
So in other words, Lorraine, I understand one member who is a voting member is not asking to be renewed?
Correct.
But there must be other members who are voting members who are seeking renewal?
Yes.
And how many of those?
They're on this list.
They are? Okay, so it's the ones that say renew. One, two, three.
The law is correct.
There are three, so they're, okay.
Hello, please?
There, the next page, right here.
One, two, three.
Okay, okay.
So that would, renewing those three would not increase the number of work, unless you chose not to renew them.
Right.
Then you would have three additional openings.
So just so we're clear on the policy, just because you're up for renewal doesn't mean you're guaranteed a spot. That's up to the board's discretion. But obviously, historically shows that typically we do renewals unless it's an issue. So, so there's three, four open spots, three renewals.
Yes.
Okay.
Chairman, can I ask David a question?
Amen.
Are you interested in any other coastal committees other than Waterways, since you do have the interest in Waterways? Or is it your preference because of the enterprise fund factor that you prefer?
That is absolutely my interest, and my, my experience has been on the Waterways. And the other, and any of the other committees, I really don't have any expertise. What were the other?
So we formed the new Coastal Advisory Commission.
Right, right.
Where we're looking for some inland representatives that also have some financial background and acumen to help us identify different funding sources, so I just thought that might be something you'd mind.
Wouldn't be as exciting for me. The other committee that I considered with CPA, just because, again, a lot of money gets put into CPA, so that's the other interest.
Bylaw Review Committee is quite...
No, and I, you know, you talk to my partner, I am not a lawyer-type of person, not very technical.
You've got to play a sales role here, too. So I get, Dave wants to be on Waterways and is considering CPC if...
And I would appreciate your questions about the, the role of a, an associate member, because in the meetings I've been at, I think there was one other, maybe a second associate member that showed up. So the associates maybe aren't performing a role that they could perform if there was a little bit more direction. They don't vote, but I don't know what the purpose is of an associate member.
Right. It's kind of, I think it's kind of been the cue, right? If you're putting your time as it shows, you're eventually...
Yeah, maybe attendance at meetings ought to be a requirement, you know, of an associate.
Any other questions for Dave? Great, thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dave.
Is Tom here?
Arcan.
Tom Arcan. Okay, we'll come check back in a minute for him.
He said, he called, he said he was not able to attend this evening, he would like to come to the seven, seven meeting if he chooses to.
Okay. And is Michael here? LaRusso?
How are you? I'm great, and yourself?
So tell us about you, and why you want to do this.
Well, my name is Mike LaRusso. I live on Ten Roberts Drive in Situate, Mass. I've lived here for forty-something years. And the water has been the primary mover in my life, in my education, in my work. I used to do Irish Moss with Lucian Russo. I used to work at Young's Boatyard back in the day. I went through the Situate school system. I used to, it was, when I was in college, I was an assistant harbor master for a number of years. I owned the Herring River Marina on the Driftway in Situate. I am a scub instructor. I, you know, there isn't a day that goes by that that's why I live in Situate, and that's why I live, you know, where I live.
Great. So I guess the, so do you think there's any sort of conflict with you having, you know, being on this committee and owning a local marina as well?
My marina is, is on the river. Majority of the issues seem to pertain to the harbor, but I also bring a unique experience of dealing with a lot of the Waterways issues. In my other work, I, I have an undergraduate degree and a master's degree in finance, and I'm a property developer. So I bring a strong financial side also, and managerial side.
Any questions for Mike?
I just know that Mike's a lot of time, and it doesn't make sense. I understand what you're saying about the conflict, because we brought that up before, the current members.
Right. One of, actually, I've been, it was Dick that was one of the people that suggested that I try to be on the board. I've been attending the board meetings for about five years regularly, so I know what goes on. And one of the things, one of the reasons that I wanted to join the board was I didn't like a lot of the self-serving, or the people that were on the board who seemed to be more interested in things that benefited themselves. I'm more interested in things that benefit the town.
Well, what, any comments from left? Okay, great, Mike, thanks for coming in. We've got to, obviously got to figure out...
Yep.
What's going on here. We've got a bunch of issues, particularly with this committee, as we spoke last meeting about people that live in town, that don't live in town, associate members, so we'll shuffle it out over the next meeting, so we'll get back to you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is Brian Cronin here? How about Ed Givens?
Ed Givens.
Hey, Ed, how are you?
Good.
Good. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Hello, everyone.
Tell us a little bit about yourself, and why you want to do this.
I'm Ed Givens. I live at Fifty-Seven Hillside Drive in Cohasset. I've been assistant harbor master in Situate fourteen years part-time, and I was five years full-time before I switched over to the police department. Been on the Situate Police Department now for about three years. I'm a volunteer boat safety instructor for the Recreation Department. I've been boating over forty years in Situate, and I miss the harbor from my time working down there, so I figured a good way to get back involved may be the Waterways, like, keep involved and share my experience, my knowledge.
Any questions for Ed?
Just a comment. This is a perfect example of, I mean, he grew up in Situate, yeah, so he lives just over the town line, but he forgot more about the harbor than a lot of us will ever know. So, and he's, you know, taught safety, boating, like he said, my sons want one. And normally, I was like, before, tonight, before I saw your name on the application, I would have said, you know, really need one for Situate residents, but, you know, I don't think you can find anyone more qualified than someone like that. So it's, it's hard, we're gonna have to wrestle with this.
And how would you balance your police officer schedule and, and the meeting schedule?
I work midnight, eight in the morning, most, all night, so that's my shift, so, yeah. So, I'm around most days.
Can I ask a question? Ed, would it be your intention to serve on the police marine unit once it's deployed?
It is one of my intentions, so, yeah.
Then that might be an issue.
Okay.
So we'll have to explore that, because you can't be technically deputized employee of the harbor master to enforce that, and also a member of the board that works with the harbor master. But we can check that out. I'm not sure of the answer, but...
As of right now, I'm not a member of the, the boating...
Right.
Thing, which hasn't come...
Well, we haven't deployed it yet, but that would, I'm assuming it would be your intent to be very involved in the police marine unit.
I was asked to be involved, though.
So when is it, because that was, my, my thought is, the ideal situation of segueing in with Ed's experience from the police, is that to be deployed this year, Tricia?
Yes, the MOA is, if not before, this week, before the union to sign off on.
So do you understand, Ed, where we're coming from? Obviously, we want you down there because of your experience, you had all that year.
I don't, I don't see where that would be a conflict interest, though.
Well, it does, because what happens is, you're, you're making decisions on, on the budget for the harbor, and so you'd be in capacity...
Actually, I was told that I was just one of five people that would just be boat captains, occasionally, I don't think I'd...
So the salary for the people on the police marine unit is being paid from the Harborways budget?
Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
So you can give yourself a raise or deduct it. You can say, hey, look, you know, that would be the only difficulty.
But that's still not fatal, I mean, he cannot, this...
You'd have to recuse yourself and things like that, but...
We just have to double-check.
Okay.
I just want to make you aware of that, there's...
No, you'd be good for, you're good for the position, it's just, and obviously, in my mind, you're ideal for the marine, from the police standpoint, so...
He likes it more now, because he can impact his income, so...
It's always good.
Believe me, it's not that easy.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Great. Thank you.
So that just adds to the complexity of this, of this department, right? We've got a very qualified person that doesn't live in the town. We talked about that last week for quite a while, but we thought it would be a factor, but not a determining factor necessarily. So we'll have to, I don't think you're going to be voting on that tonight. And then the next people...
Want to go back to the beginning first?
Yeah, I think there's one more. Is Michael here? Neo?
Is it this one here?
Brian.
Go back to...
Yeah, but I'm still on, we're still on this guy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I get you. Here we go.
Okay.
Mike, how are you?
Fine, thanks. Tony, Mike Cuneo, Twenty-Eight Curtis Street. I'm a, an associate member who attends the meetings of the Historical Commission, and I believe a full-fledged opening is, is available, and I would, I was interested in pursuing.
And what, tell us a little bit about the, about the commission, and why you like it, and what are you guys working on?
Yeah, so the commission is a relatively small group at the moment. I think there are four full members, nominally two associate members. I think I might be the only one who shows up. We get great leadership and guidance. So, you know, the commission has responsibility for reviewing demolition bylaw permits. We submitted a CPA request for repairing the Tristan Teneri signs that are around town, so...
Is your background in any historical capacity, or what do you do for...
Not, not in the, the least, just an interest.
Any questions from...
I know Mike will have a happy quarter service.
I, I think it's a great position, especially with the demolition delay bylaw, which I think is, is always important to take a look at, so, but it can create a lot of angst and sometimes anger with people having to delay, but I think it's an opportunity for the members to go through and determine whether or not it's of significant value to try to preserve. If not, then you can take it down, but I, I commend you, because I think it's a great committee, or commission, actually.
So, Lorraine, is there one opening?
There's one opening.
And one applicant?
Yes, our one.
Like those.
Is that because of Betty?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Kristen Sauter? Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Very good.
Hi, I'm Kristen Sauter, Six Fifty-Five First Parish Road. I think I'm here for the Cultural Commission or Council. So, well, I had, I wrote down a few...
And Recreation as well?
Yeah, yeah.
Is this the one you like the most?
Honestly, I'd, I'd be open to best match of my strengths and skills to where the need is. So I'm, I'm interested in, in participating and volunteering some time, and getting active in the community. Been here in Situate for eight years, grew up on the South Shore. I have a number of little youngsters that are in the community now, and I'm interested in giving back. My background, I have an undergrad in biology and chemistry, I have an MBA focused in computer information systems, currently a independent regulatory consultant in the pharmaceutical industry. I do do some real estate investment on the side, and I do have my construction supervisor's license, so I'm interested in real estate as well. So I'm open to your questions, input, as to where I could best serve in terms of committees.
So, Lorraine, I just asked you quickly, so, the Situate Cultural Council, how many openings, how many people?
They have a lot of openings, because they are governed by Massachusetts state law, that their members have to leave after a particular term.
Okay.
So they cannot be renewed, so that's why there's a lot of openings, because people are turning out. So I believe there are, let me see, how many openings? I think they have about six openings, actually, and...
Is it a functioning committee?
It is very, very functioning.
Okay.
Yeah, they have a great website, they do a lot of great work in Situate. They make, what they basically do is review grants. They provided some of the funding for the sidewalk painting project in Situate, so they do provide a lot of grants to the schools when they're submitted to the committee.
I think there's a lot of opportunity for that committee with, someone with your expertise to really work with some of the members there, just to elevate it, and really, John's always talking about, elevating our cultural offering here in Situate, how you can, you know...
There's a new chair who's great, very exciting, and, you know, really looking forward to...
Who's the chair?
I don't know the name, her name off the top of my head.
Is it Elizabeth Cranston?
It is Elizabeth Cranston.
Yeah, she's fabulous.
Thank you. She's fantastic. A lot of energy, a lot of great people on the committee.
Plus, one of the things that we're trying to have the town be designated as a cultural district, which is separate apart from the Situate Cultural Council, but, you know, I've always talked about, you know, the opportunities and the potential for expanding more cultural events. Frankly, we have them, it's just a matter of like putting them all together with all the things that the town has to offer, like antique car shows.
Yeah.
And I'm like, you know, that's something that we're waiting to get designation from the Mass Cultural Commission, I think. Is that Tricia? What's the name of it? Or application for the cultural district down in Front Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
That's where we got the money from, yeah.
There's nothing open on REC, Lorraine?
At this time, I'm not aware of any openings on Situate Aviation.
Okay.
That doesn't mean, you know, there might not be anything open.
And EDC? EDC?
EDC, the Economic...
Nobody's on EDC either at this point.
You got an interesting background that could actually fit for different committees and boards and commissions, so...
Very diversified, yeah.
So, I have a lot of managerial experience. I've led global teams. By nature, I'm being regulatory, I'm dealing with regulations and how to get drugs approved, but it's very similar...
Coastal Coalition. Situate Coastal Advisory Commission.
I don't know.
Did you ever think of that? The Situate Advisory Commission are, it's another one, because you're dealing with a lot of regulations, the seawalls and, you know...
And then I deal with technology, so getting computer information systems up and running and so, like I said, wherever you think I can invest it.
I think it's two years or a year?
I believe it's three years.
Nope, I'm just kidding.
Well, what would be your preference on all those, well...
Well, there's no openings on the other two that you wanted.
So, it'd be the Cultural Council?
I think this is a great way to start off.
Yeah.
Great. Any other questions from Kristen? Great, thank you for coming in and we'll vote these in probably the next meeting.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And Kristen Sherman couldn't be here.
Okay.
She's an excellent candidate as well. She works with Situate Social Arts Association in Hail. She's not here today, so she'll probably be able to attend the next meeting.
Okay.
All right, I met her. She would be good. Good, yeah, absolutely.
So, we'll go back to the beginning. And did Brian get here? Capadano?
Yeah.
Hi, Brian, how are you?
Evening.
Interested in the Animal Control Board?
Animal Control Board, yes. I live at 13 Standish Ave in Situate and I've been in town for 22 years. My background is in sales for automation and totally unrelated to animals, other than owning a dog for 22 years. I have very little experience with animals, but, yeah. No, no, two different dogs. Didn't quite make it that long. I saw there was an opening on the board and I thought it would be a good way to try to give back to the town.
Lorraine, before, is there one opening on this?
Yes, one opening. Well, let me look. Sorry, there's so many boards and committees and like 100 people if you track them.
I will tell you this...
There's two vacancies.
Two vacancies.
Yes.
But they're a functional committee, right?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
It's a very active board. I was, oh, he is on a couple of years ago and you'd be surprised at stuff and the activity that happens on that board, so it is, it's not a, you know, not necessarily a non-active board. Any questions for Brian?
Just why the Animal Control Board?
I know somebody that's on the board and he says it's a good place to, you know, be active and get involved, so...
Good. Brian, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
We'll probably in our next meeting. And did we skip one other? Is anybody else here in the audience for a board? Seeing no, we move on. So, the next item is a discussion vote on the bond issuance, so Pam, the Treasurer, and Nancy, the Finance Director?
Yes.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Good evening.
Good job.
So, I'm just pretty much going to follow through the memo I sent you and Nancy's going to take over the tax impact on what the president's... So, on June 2nd, myself, Tricia Van Kezey, our Town Administrator, Nancy Holt, our Finance Director, and our Town Financial Advisors from First Southwest, attended a meeting with Standard and Poor's for a bond review update. The meeting went very well and Standard and Poor's affirmed the town's AA+ long-term rating citing a very strong economy, strong management, strong budgetary performance, and very strong liquidity. So, the, on June 10th, the town sold a general obligation bond for $87,000, $87,743,000, sorry, which was huge. Nancy has a slide that shows the components of the bond. The bond was made up of the $9 million bond that was, is maturing in June and our three debt exclusion projects. Library construction, we borrowed $5 million for that. The public safety complex was $16,200,000 and the middle school construction, the $50,000, I mean $50 million. I get my millions and thousands confused, all those zeros make me a little nervous. So, in general fund borrowing, it was $73,343,000 and the Water Enterprise Fund, $14,400,000. Also made up of the bond was a refunding of a September 2005, also a debt exclusion bond for the Jenkins and the Middle School Improvement Funds. So, with the result of this bond, the town received seven bids. The winning bid was submitted by JP Morgan Securities at an average interest rate of 3.33 percent. The town received a premium of $7.2 million, which is made up of several components. The, it's, the premium's going to cover the cost of the issuance of the bond, $191,950, $5.85 million to pay down the debt exclusion projects, the library, the public safety building, and the middle school project, $595,000 to pay down the fund, the debt exclusion project that we, we, the refunding, $1.1 million in premiums to the Water Enterprise Funds and $238,000 to the general fund. So, over the, I kind of jumped ahead, but on the slide before that, it showed that with the refunding, we're going to save $481,000. I think that's definitely worth mentioning. So...
So, people understand there was an existing bond that was callable?
Right.
And interest rates turned in our favor. You guys were smart enough and aware enough to refinance it and you're going to save the town almost a half a million dollars for that refinance.
Correct.
Just, could you go back to that other screen that, no, that one? The one that's, yes, 7.2, right there. So, you add up all those amounts, it equals 7.2.
Correct.
And that's what they're going to give us, like, doing business with that? They give us, it's like, took out a closing cost on a mortgage?
Well, yes, but because this bond is made up of several different components that we really have, that I haven't dealt with before, the $5,085,000 is going to go towards the debt exclusion projects. So, at town meeting, we'll have to go to vote to, we'll have to pay that money back, but we already have, we'll already have the cash to put towards the payoff. So, you know, Nancy, you can totally interject if you'd like to, to explain more about it.
Sure. In this interest environment, the interest rates are so low, the coupon on the bond is actually higher. It's between 4% and 5% on the 25 years because bondholders want a higher return, especially that far out on the yield curve. So, the underwriters will give the town cash to lower our net interest cost. So, when Pam was telling you that the average interest cost is 3.33, it's offset by the 7.2 million. You take the total interest we're going to pay, deduct the 7.2 million, you get that net interest cost of 3.33. So, that's why we're going to be applying the $5 million that is applicable to the three debt exclusions and we pay down that principal immediately. So, as Pam pointed out and she was, I'm probably running right over what she was just about to tell you, is that there was $87 million worth of projects that were authorized that we issued bans for, but what you're going to sign is $86 million. And that's the difference between the dollar amounts is this premium being applied to the principal. So, before and when they did the Jenkins School, they saved the money aside and every year they put one twentieth over towards the debt service. We still do it. We voted it at a town meeting. People may not have realized it, but it was in the vote. This is a newer way of doing it, which makes much more sense. Why borrow something for 20 years and have to pay interest on it just to put some of that money back towards it? Why not just pay it right off the top and never pay interest? So, that's what we're going to do with that $5 million. The same thing will happen for the portion that's attributable to the Jenkins debt exclusion, the refunded bond. There's a half a million dollars worth of premium that applies to that and that, the same thing's going to happen and pay that principal down.
Good explanation.
So, she is...
I just, I want to take an opportunity to point out to the board that this is Pam's second bond issue with the town.
Ever.
And, well, and it's her second ever bond issue. This is an extremely complex bond issue. It's not your normal run-of-the-mill general obligation bond. This one had debt exclusions and as Situate knows, they don't do debt exclusions that often, which brings in different things like this application of the premium. It had a refunding, which is something you don't do that often, and that was mixed in with it. So, she had a lot of multiple complex things that she's not been exposed to before that she had to incorporate into this bond and she did a very excellent, excellent job at it. I know I'm very proud of her. I'm sure the Town Administrator shares the same feelings that she really stepped up to the plate on it. And before I forget, I want to point it out.
Oh, thank you. I'm glad Nancy was here to help and Tricia.
The next thing we want to let you know is, okay, but now we've issued this major bond, what's left on the plate? What's left on the plate is $49 million worth of authorized debt exclusion, so projects that have already been authorized by the town. Of that $49 million, only $23 million is something that the town's going to actually have to issue debt for, potentially, and pay down. That's because we have $20 million from the MSBA in reimbursements that we're expecting and that $5 million from the Mass Board of Library Commissioners for the construction project. So, this is a slide from our October 2014 meeting where Pam and I and the Town Administrator presented this to you and asked the board to consider how they wanted to present financials to the town, whether it be a 20, 25-year or 30-year bond issuance and whether, what percentage. So, what we chose at the time was to represent to the town a 25-year bond issue at an assumed rate of 4.25 percent, and this is what it looked like. It was approximately a 13 to almost $14,000 impact on the taxpayer and it gave the full amount of the potential impact, so the $7 million for the library, so a $12 million project, less the $5 million, excuse me, grant from the NBLC, the $54.1 million for the middle school, which is the $75 million, less the MSBA money, and then the full freight for the $16.2 million for the public safety complex. So, what we actually ended up issuing was slightly less, it's $6.1 million less than that. And the first item I want to go over with you is the library. When we talked to you back on, I think it was April 28th, we were talking about issuing the library at $5.5 million and leaving $1.5 million on the plate because the Library Foundation was doing their fundraising. Well, as the Library Foundation said before you, they had already raised a half a million dollars and presented the town with a check for a half a million dollars. So, we further reduced what the town was going to borrow to $5 million. Now, if the Library Foundation is successful in their quest and they're very strong in their commitment to this and they feel very strongly, as they've pointed out to the board, that they can do this, this would be the one and only borrowing that the town has to do. So, if the Library Foundation is successful in hitting their projection of $2 million, we will not have to borrow any further for this. And this is what you'll see as your impact over 25 years, an estimated impact of $878.
There's the potential of another $1.5 million that we may have to borrow for the library?
Yes, if the private fundraising does not come to fruition. So far, we've received over $600 towards the $2 million. So, that's a good start, a long way to go, but we're hopeful that the Library Foundation is very successful in their fundraising. The middle school, the total was 54.1 potential for town share. We're only borrowing $50 million in this bond and that's for two reasons. One, the construction bids aren't going to be open until December, so we don't know what they're going to come in at, so we want to leave ourselves a little leeway. We don't want to overborrow. Two, we have to be very mindful of arbitrage requirements. Our debt is tax exemptant debt, so people who buy our debt don't have to pay income taxes on it, on their dividends. So, the IRS doesn't want us to make too much money on it by putting the money in the bank and earning interest. So, we have to make certain thresholds where we have to spend down in order to hit, we couldn't hit any higher than $50 million in our thresholds. So, this is the maximum we could borrow at this time. The public safety complex, we did borrow the full amount. We have no other grants coming in for that. Everything we have for cost estimates puts us right up at the $16.2 million. So, that being said, with the reduced dollar amount based on the fiscal '15 values, we're looking at a net impact to the taxpayer after the offsets from the meals tax, solar array, and wind turbine of $542 in the first year. Now, the first year, what we had told people is the first year would be the worst year. Well, in our case, it's not going to be the worst year. We're getting a break on the first year for a couple of different ways. We issued in June, we only have to pay three months' worth of interest rather than six months. So, we don't have to pay three months on the worst year with the highest principal. We don't have to pay that because it's a June issuance. So, it's going to make year two pop up a little bit. So, we wanted to show you the first five years so people can see the trend. Year one is artificially low because we're saving the three months' worth of interest, which is good. Year two, it'll pop up less than $100 to 636. So, you want to, the chairman and I were talking today, if you want to compare things, you could compare the 636 to the 738 on the other slide and then we calculated, if you took into account the full, the difference of the $6 million, was about a $55 to $60 savings that people are seeing overall, maybe a little bit more, but that's, you know, safe savings. And then it's going to continue to drop over the length of the bond. Now, should we have to borrow the remainder of the middle school and/or the library? That's going to be somewhere around that year three or year four that that'll come in. And as we spoke, we only have about $5 million left on the table, so it's not going to be a huge impact if that comes added on to the bill.
But that would be had to borrow the full amount for the library?
We don't. We had to authorize the full amount.
Authorize?
Yeah. But we, we can only borrow, because of the way the library was voted, we cannot borrow anything that the Library Foundation raises. The language is net of any donations. So, we authorized $12 million, net of any donations we can borrow.
But you didn't go out and borrow, you know, with 6.5, oh, 6.4, but they gave the board a check for $500,000, $600,000. But you, you just hope that they're going to raise the $2 million that we have to go back?
Right. So, we're giving them the opportunity to finish their fundraising. We still have time until that project is completed. We have the library grant money to use to proceed with the project. We have this $5 million and plus we have the $600,000 that we've been given in, from the library trustees as well as the Library Foundation. So, we have plenty of money to get at least a year to a year and a half into this project.
Plus, we don't have a bid yet, so it could be...
Correct. And that, again, that one could come in a little bit lower. We always hope for lower, you know, fingers crossed that there's construction work out there and that, you know, there's not that many projects and people want to pick it up in this competition.
So, just, I was just going to explain what Nancy and I spoke about before the meeting. What we tried to do is get an apples-to-apples comparison. So, when the, and the number that we put before the public, we said it was about the 738, but that was on borrowing the full amount for each project, which we did not do. And it also, there was a, the average value of the town house changed in that time period also. So, we did it on a $480,000 house and now it's a $497,000 house. So, we went through the steps to try and true it up as best as possible so that we could figure out an apples-to-apples comparison. And like Nancy said, it's about a $55 to $60 per year impact to the better. So, and that includes if we have to go back and borrow to fully fund all of these projects. So, that's all taken into consideration. So, overall, great job. We budgeted at 4.25 percent. It came in at 3.33 percent and, you know, a little bit under.
Yeah, and I looked at that today just to see what did that interest savings. It was a little over $8 million of interest savings. So, it, you know, we may say, well, geez, could we have gone lower? Well, you always want to be lower, but we were almost a full percentage point below what we advised the public as to where we thought we would be. So, we wanted to be conservative. We wanted to come in lower and we were able to do that and that's, that's what it is in the end of the day. This particular slide, which is probably hard to see, this is all of the debt exclusions that have been approved by the town. The Jenkins High School improvements from when Jenkins was built, that was the bond that was refunded. It was issued in September 2005 for $10 million. So, that's the other piece of savings that the taxpayer is going to see this year. I know your tax bills are going up, but there is some savings in there embedded. The Jenkins School, this in fiscal '15, the average taxpayer paid $93 for that additional in their tax bill. Next year, it'll be $18 because that's that refunding, the premium coming in, and then it'll go to $83 and continue to decline until that bond matures in 2025.
We didn't extend the term, did we?
Nope. We just supplanted it with a lower interest instrument. The Wampatack School is also there and as you can see, that's not a, one that really impacts people very negatively and that'll mature out in fiscal 33. The sewer upgrade on the other end, that matures out in fiscal '21. And then the three middle highlighted columns are the three projects themselves. And so, for all of the debt exclusions, someone should expect next year that there would be an impact just shy of $700 in their tax bill, but being mindful that they already had an impact this year of about $200. So, whether they knew it or not, that was already in their tax bill, has been in their tax bill for a period of years for those other debt exclusions. And that, as we were very clear to say, would be smoothed over the four quarters. So, the tax bills that Pam is very hardly getting ready to mail out to people at the end of June will have approximately an 11 percent... ready to mail out to people at the end of June will have approximately an 11% change increase in them to smooth out that approximate $543 impact over the four quarters. So you should expect to see it go up, and that will help ease it into people's budgets. So it'll not be as painful as it potentially could be. Otherwise, it would, the entire increase would hit on the February and May bills of next year, which would be very difficult coming into the winter. So people should expect to see it in their August tax bills, which are going out at the end of this month. Pam's office, the assessor's office, Steve's, and myself, we're all there to answer any questions that anyone should have. Just graphically, some people work better with graphs. Some people work better with numbers. This is what it looks like graphically, all the way out through 2040. Both this slide and the one, and the next ones, don't show the offset from the meals tax, the solar array, and the wind turbine. It's about a $37 savings, which is trying to keep it pure so you can get a general sense of it. And this is just for 15-year. It's a little bit less busy, and you can see it a little bit better. But you can see as it generally declines, and then it will completely mature out by 2040.
Great. Great explanation. Great job on it. I know it was a ton of work for the whole team, and I hope the taxpayers are happy that we got it in lower than we thought it would be. Any other comments from anyone?
I'll be 73 when it's all paid off.
We refuse to answer that question because it might incriminate us as to how old we will be when that bond...
So we actually need to vote, right?
Mara needs to read this.
Mara has a lot.
And Mr. Chairman?
Want to take a break?
Mr. Chairman, can I just point out that this bond is also callable after 10 years? So it can be called at any time after 10 years if for some reason the rates become even more advantageous than they are now.
So she has to read this whole three-page document?
Yep.
Yep?
Does.
Don't feel like the planning board.
We'll be back in about 15 minutes.
Just remember, it's $87 million. That's why it's three pages.
All righty. I'm going to take a little drink of water.
And you're going to have writer's cramp after this, too.
Writers?
Writer's cramps.
Got to sign each one.
Oh, yes, it's a sign. Okay.
I, the clerk of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Citewood, Massachusetts, certify that at a meeting of the board held June 23, 2015, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and at which a forum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody. Voted that we hereby determine in accordance with General Law, Chapter 70B, that the amount of the cost of the Citewood High Schools and Citewood Middle School project authorized by a vote of the town passed on December 3, 2014, Article II, not being paid by the school facilities grant, is $54,82,025, and we hereby approve of the issuance of notes and bonds in such amount under said General Law, Chapter 70B. Further voted that in order to reduce interest costs, the treasurer is authorized to issue refunding bonds at one time or from time to time pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 21A of the General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority to refund all of the town's $10 million general obligation school bonds dated September 15, 2005, maturing on September 15 in the years 2016 through 2024, inclusive collectively the refunded bonds, and that the proceeds of any refunding bonds issued pursuant to this vote shall be used to pay the principal redemption premium and the interest on the refunded bonds and cost of issuance of the refunding bonds. Further voted that the sale of the $86,863,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2015 bonds of the town dated June 29, 2015, referred to as the bonds to JP Morgan Securities LLC, at the price of $94,94,845.09, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on September 15 of the years and in the principal amount and bear interest at the respective rates as follows. 2015, $3,513,000 at a rate, interest rate of 2%. 2016, $3,975,000 at an interest rate of 4%. 2017, $3,975,000 at an interest rate of 5%. 2018, $3,970,000 at an interest rate of 4%. 2019, $3,915,000 at an interest rate of 5%. 2020, $3,905,000 at an interest rate of 5%. 2021, $3,900,000 at an interest rate of 5%. 2022, $3,885,000 at an interest rate of 5%. 2023, $3,875,000 at an interest rate of 5%. 2024, $3,800,000 at an interest rate of 5%. 2025, $3,222,000 at an interest rate of 5%. In the year 2026, $3,220,000 at an interest rate of 5%. 2027, $3,220,000 at an interest rate of 4%. 2028, $3,222,000, interest rate of 4%. 2029, $3,220,000, interest rate of 4%. 2030, $3,215,000, interest rate of 4%. 2031, $3,215,000, interest rate of 4%. 2032, $3,215,000, interest rate of 4%. 2033, $3,215,000, interest rate of 4%. 2034, $3,215,000, interest rate of 4%. 2035, $3,195,000, interest rate of 4%. And in 2039, $12,780,000 at an interest rate of 4%.
Mara, I'm going to give you an option to out, and someone else can read the law. If you need a breath.
Okay.
Because Marty was going to be willing.
Marty, I was going to nominate Marty.
You're going to nominate Marty, just sitting in office?
I had two years' experience.
Guess this is it.
I don't think we borrowed another $87 million.
No, we didn't. This is big.
Further voted that the bonds maturing on September 15, 2039, a term bond, shall be subject to mandatory redemption or mature as follows. Term bond due September 15, 2039, in the year 2036, $3,195,000. 2037, $3,195,000. 2038, $3,195,000. And 2039, the final maturity of $3,195,000. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated June 4, 2015, and a final official statement dated June 10, 2015, otherwise known as the official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as are set forth in the official statement. Further voted to authorize the execution and delivery of a refunding escrow agreement to be dated June 29, 2015, between the town and US Bank National Association, a refunding escrow agent. Further voted that the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with the SEC Rule 15, Chapter 2-12, in such form as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review, update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds. Further voted that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the agenda for the meeting, a copy of which is attached heretofore, was posted on the bulletin board of the town at least 24 hours before the meeting in compliance with Section 7-11 of the Town Charter. And finally, I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in 940 CMR 29-03, Section 2-B, at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting, and remain so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of the bonds were taken in executive session, all in accordance with General Law, Chapter 38, paragraphs, or sections 18 through 25.
Sections.
Sections, sorry. 18 through 25 is amended.
Great. We have a motion. This is dated June 23, 2015.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? It is unanimous 5-2-0. Thank you very much for reading it. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you. Thank you, Pam. Nancy, well done.
Good evening.
Great. We're going to move on to the next item, which is the inlet buoy. Acting Harbor Master Mike Pierce, I saw him in the back. Mike, how are you?
Good.
So, just an update. The new inlet buoy broke free in the Plizin in January. Just
to let you know, it's approximately close to 13,000-pound buoy and roughly 35 feet long. It's now beached on Fourth Cliff. After numerous phone calls, emails, et cetera, to the Coast Guard, we were finally able to get through. And they just basically just kept passing it off. We'll get to it. It's on the list. You know, we're figuring out how to get it off the beach, yada, yada, yada. And then when they eventually decided to come back, they came back and said, we're looking to disestablish the buoy. We're potentially getting away from aids to navigation. And that was the final answer. So immediately we went to the Citewood Waterways. They got on board, contacted Marshfield Harbor Masters as well. They called the Marshfield Waterways, and we flooded the Coast Guard with emails, phone calls from numerous just aggravated mariners and ourselves. And we were getting responses that they were working on. At this point, we do not have an update on what is being done. But we're continuing to look into it.
So we read your letter, and basically the buoy snapped free, went to the beach. We want it back. They don't want to put it there. They say, use your GPS, use your other navigational tools.
Right.
And I saw letters from people saying that it's very needed. It's a dangerous area, and it helps in bad weather. It helps in, obviously, if it's snapped in the storm, it's a turbulent area. And we're not getting much response from the Coast Guard.
Not at this time, no.
So what can we as a board do, or is it, we're just kind of in this holding pattern?
I think right now, we're currently just at a holding pattern. I guess we got to wait until the final word, and whatever they do come back with, and then try again.
So what would they expect us to do with this 35,000-pound?
They're responsible for removing it, but they're trying to figure out how to remove it. It is high and dry up on Fourth Cliff. Any of you's more than welcome, if you ever want to go out and take a look at it. I'll gladly take you out so you can see it.
Can they just, maybe just send another one and then have a salvage company scrap?
Potentially.
The buoy tenders are in Woods Hole.
Right. And potentially, they, they could, but they, at this point, this, they want to outsource. They're done. There was talk, they potentially were going to stick another can out there. And it was a much smaller can, different color, with a built-in beacon. And it's just, it's really not acceptable. That buoy had a built-in gong that you could hear for a mile, two miles away at sea. And you knew, no matter what, you'd get closer and closer. You pointed that compass heading west, and you'd sail center of that channel. It's just, you've seen it. The fog rolls in within minutes, and you're out there on a beautiful day.
Their attitude is it doesn't even really need to be replaced, is that's the argument?
Exactly. Yeah, exactly.
So who owns the buoy?
Coast Guard.
Coast Guard. And as far as the buoy's concerned, there's no damage to it. It's just it's high and dry on Fourth Cliff.
Correct.
So...
It just snapped off its mooring chain.
We don't have the authority to drag it back out and chain it, anchor it off wherever it was?
I don't, technically, no, but I don't think we'd have the resources to do it as well.
I was wondering, like a tugboat or something to drag that thing right out of there?
Potentially.
Dig a channel and just... How far up is it, Mike? Is it way?
It's way above the high tide point.
So did the chain snap?
Mm-hmm. Yep, chain snapped.
I just, I know I contacted Congressman Lynch's office, and I know Lorraine did too. Has Bob Folks gotten back to you at all?
No, he has not yet. No.
Okay. Because I know, I think you sent him a letter as well.
I did. I spoke with him a couple times, and he had made a few phone calls as well and emails, and he did not get a response yet either. Just kind of limbo right now.
Congressman Lynch?
It's federal.
Because it's federal.
Federal.
Yeah.
So the reason I put this on the agenda is to hopefully publicize even more for our residents and our voters, and encourage them to contact Congressman Lynch's office. Marshfield is just as concerned about this issue. Their congressman is Congressman Keating. So we need many, many voices to register their displeasure with this decision. I think what Mike says is very important, that this is a difficult navigable channel without this buoy, and it's creating a public safety hazard. So hopefully Ruth will report on it on the newspaper, but also folks watching at home to contact your congressman and/or senator and encourage that this buoy be replaced.
Absolutely.
Should we send another letter?
I was just going to suggest, Lorraine, is there any way you can draft a letter that just kind of summarizes the safety condition and us and the Harbor Master being familiar with the environment here that is very, very necessary and needed?
They, Congressman, neither one of those guys can be familiar with this area. As we just said, it's dangerous on a nice sunny day, let alone with bad weather. It just doesn't make sense to me.
Great. Well, thanks for coming in.
Thank you for having me.
And we'll get a letter ready from us. And anyone that's watching, especially your voters, please write a letter to your congressman and your senator and ask them to act. Moving on to the next item with this discussion vote. We're postponing that. The agenda will discuss postponing the year-end transfers because there's a few items that we don't have finalized numbers on. Next item is a discussion vote of C-Wall Engineering and Design Services contract. Kevin, how are you?
Good evening. Great. Yourself?
Great.
Would you like me to start off giving a little update on where we are with the water and what's going on with the water projects for the board? First Parish, 3A West is complete with the services and the water line. There's still some touch-up that has to go on with the pavement. 3A East, the main line is in place up to Country Way. It's currently being tested and sampled. Samples have been drawn and sent to the lab, and then we can start doing the individual services. Country Way, the main line is completed down to Elm Street. That'll be in the process of being tested. Contractor started on Elm Street. He'll continue on there. Then he'll make a jump to Codworth, and that should coincide with the ending of school in that area, so it shouldn't be an impact. And then he'll complete the rest of Country Way where K.R. Resenda's left off. Hathley Road, the main line is complete, and they're starting up on the services. Summer Street, we have about another two weeks of mainline work, then we'll be starting on the services there. Otherwise, we're working on some paving. We started paving Hathley Road today. First spot, we'll continue tomorrow, weather provided, and hopefully knock that out. And then we're going to jump to Anvonal Road, and then we'll be doing the Cedar Point area. And then a little later in July, we'll be doing Meeting House and some of the other streets, the lower section of Country Way, and we'll clean those up also.
Yeah, let me say one quick thing, and then everybody can say what they want. But just want to remind everybody that we're in a three-year project where we're spending $22 million to replace all of our water lines that are over 75 years old. Kevin showed me pictures of some of the ones that they've replaced, and they're all just like the ones that Al used to bring in here. You can literally put your finger through what Kevin was saying. So we understand it. If you have brown water, we've got brown water too. So unfortunately, there's no easy fix for it. Kevin did say today that there was a major connection that went through yesterday or today that should have resolved some of the upturn that has happened in the last couple of days. And we apologize for it, but just know that the departments, the Water Department, the DPW are all working as hard as they can to resolve it, because most of them live in this town too, and they have brown water also. So I apologize that you have to go through this. We all have to go through it. And hopefully, when this is done, everyone will be for the better, and we won't have to deal with it anymore. and we won't have to deal with it anymore. Um, John, do you wanna...
I just wanted to ask Kevin, I, I know the answer, but just to explain it. What you're doing on Hadley Road and some of these roads is part of the original contract.
Correct.
That, um, any company bids on it, they, they lay the line, they backfill it, they put a temporary patch, and they come back. In their contract, they come back a year later and recut their patch and put another patch down.
Correct.
They're doing, they're doing, they're gonna, they're gonna hold their feet to the fire to do the second round of patching and see how that looks and so forth, and how it performs, and then we'll decide if we want it. Right, and from gutter to gutter. But I said to Kevin, I said, "Why don't we just forgive them, or have them do the whole thing?" But the way the bids are designed, if someone didn't leave a lot of money for that particular line item, they, they love to walk away. Am I correct? So...
That's correct. And, and one of the things I was doing is that was delayed a little bit. We probably could've got it done sooner, but I was trying to negotiate with the contractor to go gutter to gutter. And, uh, they were pretty adamant. They wanted full price. We could get the same price we did from T.L. Edwards, so there'd be no net savings if we took it out of his contract. Um, so we had him do his contract work and maintain it, and, you know, uh, so far, it looks pretty good out there right now. Um, Marty saw it earlier.
Hadley Road's awesome.
Yeah.
We need to get country, I, I know you were talking about Countryway. That's bad between, from probably you, Paul, or that to, uh, not quite right.
And with any luck, that'll be the second week in July, sometime after July 4th. Um, if there's problems with weather, it could push back a little bit, but we'll get that in there next. And if there are any daily issues on that, we can still call the contractor. They come back and they make the repairs.
While we're on that subject, Kevin, I know we may not do it every single year, but are we gonna do any streets that are just regular paved?
We are. We have, we have that Pyramid Neighborhood that we have to finish and top out every, you know, that whole area in there that we're doing. Um, Glades is...
What's that?
Uh, Pyramid Road, in that area, there was a section that was done. Delta, King's, King's Way, um, that was, that was done. That has to be topped out. That was a full, full repair. That was in pretty bad shape. It was crumbling. Um, and we're looking at the other areas. Our biggest thing that we're looking at right now, um, we're looking at Countryway from, like, Ronnie Shones, um, down to Countryway, you know, down along Countryway from Ronnie Shones, um, towards the DPW. And one of the things we just don't want to do is we want to make sure our water lines, we're not gonna pave something and then either rip it up with the water line project or rip it up with a future sewer line project, if that's going on. And that's one of the things we're battling with. And the other thing is, we want to see how bad our good Hadley Road comes out when it's complete, because right now, we've completed Hadley Road from Jericho all the way to Gannett. That's all-new water pipe. It's gonna be all-new water pipe, and that's one of our main throughways throughout the town that feeds all the, all the small neighborhoods. Um, so that's huge in itself. But if, when we go out there and look at Hadley Road, we actually found full sections of curb, concrete curb, that are about six inches below the roadway, because they just kept paving over it and over it and over it, and it's just, it disappeared. So, um, there's sections of Hadley Road that are, uh, 24 inches thick. There's sections of First Parish Road that are 28 to 30 inches thick for asphalt. It's, it's extremely...
Great.
They used concrete, and, and it's not in good shape. So, so every, everything we do, we'd like to do it street to street with the drainage and also with the sidewalk at the time. Um, we are, we're looking at a lot of different sections. Um, we have Glades Road that we're gonna be doing later in July. Hopefully, that's set up, and that's part of the damage from the storm damage. Um, we're in the queue for the paver at that point there.
So, that's late July?
Probably late July. Um, we never get a square answer from the paver. It keeps getting pushed off.
I got a couple of calls on Glades, so that's why I was curious. What's the timeframe? I mean, um, start to finish. I mean, I know, I mean, Hadley was going quick. Obviously, that's a little different, but...
Hadley's going quick. We did the primary paving on some of the holes. We've already gone out there, and we've done it. We've also swept it up.
On Glades?
On Glades. Um, that's been done recently. Bill Graham called me actually the other day to thank me about it. Um, so that's in, it's in decent shape. It's, it's passable. It should be, it should be pretty good, but we're gonna top the whole area route, um, as I said, in, in mid-July to, uh, to...
Explain that in, it's an overlay?
It's an overlay. There's an inch and a half of asphalt that's put on top of the existing, um, and there'll be some milling involved in, in cleaning it up.
That's not who called me, but I just, but he's in the same group of feelings.
So, that's where we get some FEMA money, correct?
We have some FEMA money and some storm money in there for the damage, yes.
That turned out to be $138,000 or something. What was that number? Not a lot of money, but...
Um, I, that number sounds right, but I'm, it's...
I'm just pulling it out. I don't know where I got it.
Okay.
Any other comments on brown water?
Just, uh, the recent brown, the spade of brown water, Kevin. Do you change over the pipes or what?
We, what we've been doing is that area of First Parish is, um, is extremely important, up, up going up the hill towards Maple. Um, that's one of the main feeds from one of our two tanks. We've got a tank on Creelman and a tank up at the top of Maple. Um, that is a main thoroughfare for water, and the water is run up to the tank through First Parish. When we're replacing that line and we've shut it down, we don't have the full connections. We found a couple of things in 3A that weren't expected. One being a cross, which was a, which was an interconnection that wasn't supposed to be the way it was. Um, the water actually had to be rerouted, so instead of filling the tank up, going right up First Parish, the water had to go down Countryway all the way around Man Hill, back up, and come back down the other side. So, what that was doing, it was creating a much greater path to fill the water up. And it was going through some, some bad pipes. It was going a much greater distance to, to fill the tank up. And that was causing a lot of pressure problems, and it was causing, causing a lot of water quality problems, our, our brown water problems that we had, because the flows that have been going in the same direction over the past 60 years, all of a sudden, they're changing, going a different route, and that's at a, at a higher velocity and a higher volume, which was creating more brown water.
So, now with the pipes being completed on, um, First Parish, are they connected in the right direction, or is it still going?
As of 12 o'clock today, we made our last connection on 3A. We've been working with the state on 3A. Um, and it's, it's very strict working with the state. We have, the state, we have to put the flow field in the hall immediately and pave it by the end of the night. So, it's kind of a tricky operation, and we've done it...
My point is, Kevin, in other words, is the direction going back in the way it was originally?
Correct.
So, in other words, hopefully, the, the brown water should be abating at this point?
Hopefully.
Because the direction's going back in the original way it was.
Hopefully, it's subsiding, and we have the combination too, because usually, we have our worst water right around July 4th, when everybody's moving back in.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks for the update. Um, now on to the engineering of the seawall.
Excellent. Okay, what we did is, we put an RFP out to, um, to a few engineering firms, and when we had that meeting, um, prior, when we went and spoke to the selectmen and looked at our long-term plan, we produced this plan right here. One of the things that was brought up at that time was engineering and designing the sections of wall that do not have any houses there, so we wouldn't be chasing all the easements and everything else, so that we'd be able to move quicker if we did get a grant. We've included those two sections in this contract. It's the light blue area here, and the purple area that's right there, where there aren't any houses. Um, and that's the engineering contract that we put out to take care of those two areas. San Hills, same, same area. Uh, the continuation...
That's the area that floods.
That's the area that floods, and that's to raise the wall up two feet. And, um, what we're gonna try to do is use as much of the existing wall as we can, because some have been updated over the past 10 years. Um, the wall at Gulston's property has been severely damaged in the past storms, so, um, we're actually been out there. We were out there today, and we'll be out there probably the rest of the week doing some work, shoring that up, so that we don't lose that wall, hopefully.
And the, the bid for the engineering?
Um, this was an RFP, um, so we don't necessarily have to go with the lowest bidder. Um, we chose Coastline as the most advantageous firm. The reason is, they were the, um, authors of our last grant that we just received for the $4 million, and we felt comfortable with them.
Great.
Were they the lowest as well? I don't see the backup there.
They were not the lowest. Um, they came in at 162. Childs came in at 141, and GZA came at 157.
Childs, okay. Childs and the Cape?
They are from, I wanna say Wayland. Um, they're the people that did the pier.
All right.
It's a, it, they're a very good company. I, we just felt if somebody was gonna put together a proposal in short time, Coastline had the most advantageous to get in the next round of funding. Hopefully, we can get something together and get that on, get that in the next round of grants.
Motion?
To the Board, second of the Board, a contract to provide engineering and design services for the repair slash replacement of the existing seawall located on Ocean Side Drive across from number se, uh, across from 7th Avenue, plus and minus 820 feet, and an additional seawall located across from 11th Avenue, plus and minus 525 feet, to Coastline Engineering and American Mass for $162,900.
Second?
Second by Mr. O'Toole. Further comments from anyone? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? It is unanimous, five to zero. So, Kevin, the next one is the flow metering contract?
Next one is, we did another RFP, and this was a large RFP for INI work, and it was basically to go through town and start getting in tune with our INI program again. And this is a lot, a contract that will go out, and it'll actually put flow meters in the sewer manholes, so that we can track down where a majority of our sewer flows are coming from, um, in the fall season, when, when the water table's higher. And we can track down and try to pinpoint some of the areas if we have larger areas that are leaking. Um, and this, this bodes well with our, uh, DEP permits and everything else.
This new technology? I don't think I've ever heard of, uh, sewer news before. Well, how are you terrified?
Um, I'm not sure how we did it before, but these are actual, you put the flow meters in the manhole, and they measure the flows.
So, it's about $70,000. Is it, is it a time contract? Is it a...
Well, the first phase, it's, the RFP is a larger area. It'll go over a couple of years in its different areas. So, the first phase is to interpret the results and then continue on to the next phase of what you would go to for that section. The first phase is $67,000 or $69,991, I'm sorry. Um, we priced it out for the entire lot, but we're only awarding the first part of it right now. Um, the total contract could be upwards of 277. Um, the Western Sampson was 308, and Tyon Ball was 317.
So, where's this money coming from?
From our INI account.
So, they're gonna put some sort of device down in a number of sewers? I mean, a number...
Uh, a major, yes. I'll, pretty much, um, most of sewer manholes, most of the main sewer manholes.
And this will detect during those downtimes where, where water's coming from?
You'll leave them in two to four weeks, so you'll move them in, in and around over those two to four-week periods, and then you can track where all your water, all your gray water's coming in from, and, um, try to get a better handle on where the water's coming from and the areas that need to be attacked.
And then you said this contract could go on to be $270,000 over a couple of years?
Correct.
And that doesn't include any plugging of holes? That's just really analysis as to where to...
It's analysis. It could get into, uh, putting a contract out to plug the holes, but it, it is engineering, mostly engineering work. Um, we could spend the $69,000 and decide we don't want to go any further. We might do further evaluations and go after, after the holes ourselves.
So, I just have a question as far as the engineering part. So, you, you have the flow meters. You said they get moved?
Yes.
After a period of time?
Typically, um, you might leave it in place for two weeks.
Okay.
Or you might leave one in place for four weeks. But you may move it from manhole to manhole for the flow meter. You don't have to leave it in the full four-week period or the full two-week period. You might take a strategic area and take, if there's three manholes in a line, you might go each manhole one week, so that you could track the flows.
The only, the only reason I ask the question is, so, we don't really, it must be difficult to get apples to apples then, because you might have different conditions during those other periods, periods of time.
Yeah, but you, it's linked, so you could tell from this manhole to this manhole to this manhole, you have so much coming in from here, and you have so much coming out here, what the, what the aggregate is of, that's coming in the middle.
Okay. I'm just trying to imagine, because, you know, you could have a total different set of circumstances over a period of weeks.
You could, and they, they take, uh, rain gauges and everything else into consideration when they do it. Um, and, and that's why it's expensive.
So, is this like an optional thing? Why are we doing this? I mean, it's just an expense, it's expensive over the course of a couple of years, a quarter of a million bucks or something. Is this something the DEP wants us to do, or is this just part of our, our course of finding holes to plug?
It's, it's part of our course narrowing down the areas where we have the most flow, uh, the most flow and activity coming in.
It's gonna benefit the sewer system.
Right, but DEP, if they don't demand it, I'm sure they encourage it.
It, it also helps in our DEP permit in, in showing when we renew our, our permits with the, um, wastewater treatment facility, that we are doing an aggressive INI program, and then we're carrying it on, um, and going forward with it.
I think it's necessary. I mean, I just, I feel like it is. Loading up a sewer system, you know?
So, I was told by the, uh, moving page, street, uh, above it.
Yeah.
Well, that's one we could go in and seal the pipe with the, um, the lining.
So, is this in lieu of, before we were doing the INI, where they were putting cameras up? Is this a...
Oh, yeah, I remember that.
Are we foregoing that, or...
No, we, we'd still do cameras, and that's what some of the other money in, in this far is. You could, you could do camera work. You could do further investigation where it would go. This is just the initial of flow gauges, trying to figure out where all our flows are coming. If we're treating 1.4 million gallons per day, you know, you've got significant flows coming from different areas. Maybe we could find, um, one area of town where we're getting, you know, two-thirds of the flow higher than we should be, and then we can track that down and try to narrow down what we have for leaks and where the leaks are coming from. And then what you do at that point is, then you'd go in heavy with cameras in that area and try to pinpoint it down.
So, the, the outside expense is the 277. That, we may not have to get to that point, correct?
No, this is just the initial with the, uh, flow gauges, um, and it keeps us online with the DEP that we are doing inflow and infiltration.
So, Kevin, are we starting again, kinda like from square one, to try to figure out the flow? I mean, the reason why I'm asking is, is that I thought that we'd spent, certainly before my tenure, a lot on INI. It feels like we're starting it all over again to try to anticipate, or at least try to, um, attempt to find out where all this flow's coming again.
We've made significant improvements doing lining. We still have a huge amount of INI. Um, we haven't pinpointed it all down. Um, INI's not an easy business. You'll patch a pipe and leave it, and there'll be two other areas of, when the groundwater goes up, two other areas that'll come out right on that same pipe. Um, it's tricky in, in the, you know, we can't pinpoint at this moment and say it's coming from one particular area.
So, I guess, when I get back to my analogy of square one, are we basically saying, "Okay, we're gonna start from this area and work our way back to try to figure out the flow?" Or are we able to go and utilize what we've done in the past and say, "We've done the INI in these various sections. We're gonna start doing the monitoring from up in the north or..."
No, we're gonna, we're gonna check, we're gonna check the whole town.
The whole town, okay.
We're not gonna just pinpoint and say one area, because that other area might've been done seven or eight years ago, and in the meantime, somebody might've added a, um, you know, some sort of pump system, or, or some, something might be going on. There could be something that's broken, and we don't know it over that timeframe from the last time this was done.
Well, isn't this kinda like an, ever, we're, we're always gonna be chasing after this INI? In other words, and I'm only asking because I'm like, if we've done all this work and spent all this money seven, 10 years ago, 15 years ago, we're gonna go back and kinda start all over to try to anticipate, because things have changed, you know, people are adding new things. It seems like we're never gonna get caught up to try to anticipate, because let's assume the section that I live on is, is fine, and then all of a sudden, I tap in a new source. You're not gonna figure that out until you go back and do some form of testing, whether it's through, um, water metering or... Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do. Well, INI is tedious. You're, you're always fighting, fighting INI in a sewer system like this.
I mean, unlike the, um, Water Department when, you know, like, I think it's the town of Quincy, that if somebody has a, um, a broken pipe, the flow hits, they can monitor, monitor it and then determine, "You got a broken pipe. Call the resident," and within a day or so, they can get somebody out there.
Right, but that's the water system, though. That's a pressurized system, so they have flow meters on it, or they have meters on it, and they can tell by the electronic meters that they have. It isn't, that's the actual drinking water, I believe, not the sewer system.
So, the reason why I was referencing that is, would, a way to try to anticipate how to deal with this would be to permanently have some form of flow meters for this? Because, I mean, I feel like it's, we're shooting in the dark here. Like, we're never gonna be able to figure out this INI, 'cause five or 10 years down the road, the areas that we thought were fine are now open up for...
Uh, the, the flow meters are very expensive, and they're, they're labor-intensive to install. The flow meters are very expensive, and they're labor-intensive to install. The other problem is, you'd have to have the capability to check for accuracy and make sure they're within limits of what you're getting with the flow meters and calibrate them. It might be something that would be beyond what the sewer department has. Most towns in most different areas go out in a, they actually do break it out into different sections and subcontract it all out. We just finished a large INI project, our last round of INI with Tyon Bond. One of the suggestions that they pointed out after we lined a lot of pipe and did a lot of services, is that we do a reevaluation of the system and see if we can pinpoint where the flows are coming from with the different neighborhoods, because it's, it hasn't been done in a long time to pinpoint where we are. And that's the hope of, we could narrow that down.
All right. Thanks.
Do we want to make a motion for this contract?
Sure. Move that the Board of Selectmen award the contract to provide professional engineering services in connection with continuous flow metering and recommendations report to CDM Smith of Boston, Mass. for sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? It is unanimous, five to zero. Kevin, your...
Up one more time.
Yep.
This is the engineering contract for the design and replacement of the Chain Pond Pump Station, and it's also for some improvements to the, to one of our other pump stations. This basically goes down to, it was voted in town meeting to do a complete replacement on the Chain Pond Station, and go forward with that.
What do these bids command that, Kevin? This one's seventy-one to one.
I apologize. I don't know why you didn't have the second sheet. What we do is, we do a complete evaluation. Dan, Sean, and myself evaluate each firm, and then we open up the prices afterwards. We sent this out to Western Sampson, Woodward and Curran, Holsey Witten, Tyon Bond, and CDM Smith. We only received responses from Western and Sampson and Woodward and Curran. Holsey Witten, Tyon Bond, and CDM Smith were too busy at the time, and they were unable to bid it. Woodward and Curran's cost proposal was ninety-six thousand sixty dollars. So our lowest price was seventy-one thousand one hundred.
So that doesn't really replace the pump, it's only the engineering for the pump?
Correct. And it's not a pump. It's the pump station itself, which is a, the building, the whole, the whole nine yards on that.
That's by Egypt, right?
Yes. And then the Sand Hills Pump Station also.
I can tell you, Kevin gave me a tour of the one down at Sand Hills. It goes four stories down. Thing is, it's like a bomb shelter. It's incredible. So I'm assuming, and I would not get into the one at the Chain Link Pond, because you literally have to climb down, I think, the tube, right?
It's climbing down a tube, and it's, this is one of our forms of INI, because it is leaking like a sieve. There's a lot of water, groundwater, that's coming into it at this point now.
And so that backed up?
That's the one that backed up.
All the F1 came up through it?
Sand Hills.
No, this one down at Egypt. And they had to go down, the guy, I don't know, I don't, these guys who do this for the sewer department, don't get paid enough, bottom line, Tricia. They don't get paid enough to do this. I mean, I went down to the one at Sand Hills. It was disgusting. It was clean, but I mean, it was disgusting what they have to do. But from what I understand, they had to do it. Egypt, don't get paid enough. I'll tell you right now, to literally go down after all that stuff backing up to clean it.
I offer tours anytime anybody wants to come down.
Kevin, when do you anticipate the work actually being done after the engineering? They put your timing on it.
Ideally, I'd like to have this done in the fall. That's very aggressive with permitting and everything else, and we'll have to keep the existing system in place while we replace the pump system. But I won't know till they really get their teeth in it and come up with a good design, because it could be a lead time for pumps, the pump station, or whatever we can reuse and is salvageable.
It's a six-hundred thousand dollar project.
Six-hundred.
Yeah.
Motion?
Please.
Move that the Board of Selectmen award the contract for providing engineering and design services for the replacement of the Chain Pond Pump Station to Western and Sampson of Peabody, Mass. for seventy-one thousand one hundred dollars.
Second?
Second by Mr. Danny. Further discussion? Anyone? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? It is unanimous, five to zero. Kevin, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Public facilities?
It's me.
Yes.
So I wanted to update the board and the public on the status of the three major building projects that we have going on. The library is first. Filed sub-bids for the contractors to the GC, General Contractor, were due on June 18th. There are over thirty-two firms that took out specs, so if that's any indication of the building market, hopefully that trend continues. Bids for the general contract construction are due July 9th, with the intended contract award hopefully around July 23rd.
What project is that?
This is the library.
Okay.
The temporary library is now open. It opened July, June 15th at the Situate Harbor Community Building.
You almost said it.
If you have not been there already, they have done, all the staff, Jesse, Kevin Kelly, Joe Sullivan, our OPM, and the staff of the library have done just a phenomenal job. I would submit that the temporary library is superior to many permanent libraries in communities, in some communities, certainly some towns that I've worked in and seen. So please go to the library. I think you'll be amazed, and we've done a number of improvements down there that will service well once the library vacates. The public safety complex, the board approved the final design last week. The Design Review Committee continues to meet. We are in the process right now, we're pre-qualifying the subcontractors for that project with the Subcommittee of the Public Building Commission. Public safety building specs, we anticipate will go out August 6th. The middle school is just received approval for 60 percent design from MSBA. With all the submittals, I have the detailed plans with me if you want to see them later. So everything's on schedule for that. We anticipate that bids will go out this fall with a bid opening scheduled around December 15th. So lots going on in addition to other regular building and capital projects. You'll note the ramp and the entrance here.
I want to commend you on that. That has been a sore spot for me for years, and I'm glad to see that at least we're doing something on it. I mean, it's been falling to pieces, and we fixed it. I don't know if it was when you were here, Rick, but I mean, it's about time. Regardless of what happens with this building, it's like, you got to have accessibility that's going to be better than what it was. So commend you, or Kevin, or whoever.
But, well, thank you, but, you know, Kevin is, you know, we're really starting to come together after two, three years now with the public facilities, dealing with school and municipal buildings in addition to this influx of new capital construction. But as is the case with this and many other things, when we open it up, we have many surprises. This was a day job that will now probably extend into a week, also complicated by the weather. But I think I shared with you the photos, when they started to chisel away, there was a six-inch gap right out the back door. So, sort of an unknown hazard. So, but again, we have other building projects going on, and we'll just continually ask for the public's patience between the water work, the building projects, and whatnot. So that's the public facilities update. And I did provide you with the turbine update that, if you have any questions, I can answer.
Facilities? You know, I'm going to juggle things around for two seconds before we get into the discussion of our policy review. I see Attorney Cole Poizier. If you want to come up and we'll do your licensing real quick, that should only take a couple minutes.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, folks. And I think the first one on the agenda is the outdoor entertainment permits for Hadley Country Club. There's a letter submitted by the general manager of the club. These are for three events. These are the same events that happen every year there for recent years. They're in the back. Most of the, the two Thursday night ones are in the back of the clubhouse. The other one is during the day on the side lawn. It's the Fourth of July party. This is nothing new. We've never had any issues. Notice was dropped off to all butters around, you know, not the whole borders of Hadley, but on Hadley Road in that area where they would be impacted. Never had an issue.
Any questions on the Hadley ones? Think, with a motion?
Will the board approve the following events, Hadley Country Club, Saturday, July 4th, 3:30 to 8:00 p.m.? Thursday, July 16th, 6:30 to 10:00 p.m.? Oh, let me back up a little bit. The Saturday, July 4th, 3:30 to 8:00 p.m. is with a disc jockey with amplification of a sidebar. Thursday, July 16th, 6:30 to 10:00 p.m. is guitar player slash singer with amplification. And Thursday, August 20th, 6:30 to 10:00 p.m. guitar player slash singer with amplification.
Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, five to zero. And the other one?
The other one's for the Situate Harbor Yacht Club. Once again, this is a number of events that are taking place this summer there, as well...
The yacht club or the country club, Frank?
It's the country. No, it's Situate Harbor Yacht Club. That was a mistake on a prior...
It was revision of the agenda.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It was always Situate Harbor Yacht Club.
Okay.
Yeah. It just was wrong on the agenda. So anyhow, these are all traditional events, same things every year again. No real surprises. The one thing that is a little bit new is, on these Friday nights from 6:00 to 8:30, again, in the back of the club, there is a guitar player with amplification just from 6:00 to 8:30. That's kind of a new endeavor that they're doing down there. Trying to, it's been pretty popular, so trying...
That's on the other side of the tennis court, so it's not...
Yeah, it's in the back of that activities building on the back deck, kind of facing out towards the water, only till 8:30. Otherwise, everything else is the same thing as every other year. We've come in front of this board and asked for. The manager did put in a couple of things in, at the end that are actually inside the clubhouse. I'm not positive that that is even necessary for the outdoor entertainment, but she added them in there. It's up to you whether you feel that's appropriate to vote them or not, but...
So Frank, there was amplification with all these prior approvals?
Everything's the same, yeah. As far as I know, there's always been amplification on these events down there, Tricia. It's never been just, you know, in other words, a singer with, without some sort of speaker.
Questions? Motion?
Will the board approve following events for the Situate Harbor Yacht Club, Saturday, June 27th from 2:00 to 8:00 p.m. guitar player slash singer with amplification. Saturday, July 4th, noon to 4:00 p.m. a disc jockey. Friday, July 10th, and July 17th, or August 24th, from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. guitar player with amplification. Wednesday, July 22nd, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. a disc jockey. Friday, July 31st, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. band with amplification on the back deck. Friday, August 7th, from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. a disc jockey.
Second.
Yeah, the others are inside. I don't...
I agree.
...pass.
Yep.
Second by Mr. Danny. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? It is unanimous.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hope you make it down there for maybe one of the events.
Not a member.
Hopefully you have Francois or Nellie by chance. He'd be happy to be my guest at any of them, all right?
There you go. We different.
The other fourth. Then we're going to go back to the 9:30 item, which is discussion of policy review for board committees and commission applicants. We started this discussion last meeting, and I don't know that we came to a conclusion, other than maybe we didn't want to come up with a conclusion.
That's a pretty good idea.
So if we want to have further discussion on it, I think the one that's impacting the most is the water waste one, which has always been a favorite for people. It always has a lot of people involved. There's boaters that are outside of our community that are involved in it. So that's the one that I think it's really currently the most sticky to. So any further discussions? Trish did a great outline in terms of...
Lorraine did it, not me.
Lorraine did. In terms of the different scenarios that come into play.
I don't know, just put it in.
Yeah. So, so you've got, I think the biggest issue is just people that don't, aren't full-time residents in Situate, and whether we want them on our committees and to what capacity, and what role does that play in our selecting committee members? So I'll open it up to discussion and see if anyone has any other opinions after they've thought about it for a couple of weeks, and then we can see what we want to do. Laura?
I've thought about it a little bit more. The only place, I mean, I do respect the liaison position from Marshfield with waterways. My question is, do we have that reciprocity on the Marshfield Waterways Commission? Do we have a member, a Situate resident on the Marshfield Waterways Commission?
I don't know, Brad. Do you know? Peter? Do you or Brad?
No idea.
No.
The answer is, Master?
Just say your name.
Brad White, Marshfield. And I believe the answer is yes, Harbors master Mike Tabao. Lives in Situate and is on the Marshfield Waterways.
Yeah, but he's not, he's not an active member. He's a resident. So in other words, we're asking, is there somebody from Situate who's on the Harb, the Marshfield Water Waste Committee the way that we have somebody from Marshfield on the Situate Water Waste Committee? And the answer is no.
Okay. I do know that Mike is the Harbors master on there, and I do know that Mike McNamara, who is the chairperson, has put out an open-handed invite to anybody who would like to be a liaison between Situate and Marshfield. So, but there has been nobody to step up to that position at this time.
Maybe that liaison could be an associate, non-voting member of the commission. I still feel strongly that we should, are, we should ask taxpayers and these voters as... That's my question.
As first choice, so if we had vacancies, and the only vacancies were out of town, summer residents, business owners, would you be okay with that then?
When you say taxpayers, Maureen.
I was just asking.
Yeah. I don't, I'm not, I'm open to, if we want to tier it, unless we back into it. But I think a priority should be given to...
Situate residents.
Situate residents that are voters and taxpayers. I know we fall into a little gray area for those that own summer homes.
They're taxpaying.
I understand that. I'll finish talking. That own summer homes that pay taxes, and if they live in the vicinity and give the time, you know, I think that's worthy of consideration as well. You know, again, it's just the ambiguity, the ambiguity that we want to...
Well, my point is that I don't think you have to be a taxpayer, because you can be a full-time resident in Situate, be a voter, but not be a taxpayer. You can be a renter.
Sure.
So the taxpayer thing, I think, would be off the table, so.
A resident.
Correct.
That's valid.
Yeah, I think, you know, as I said to you, I mean, I know you're talking about taxpayers, but I think the bottom line is, we're talking about people who are residents. What do you call your domicile? Domicile is, what are you talking about for voting? What is your home? You know, you're saying, this is where I live. So I think that's the first criteria that we should be giving to any person who's looking to be getting on the board. If they own property, even if they're part-time residents, I think that's a consideration that the board should consider. And I think, you know, the next thing is, then you get into what happens if there's a vacancy. My position on it is that if there's somebody who's qualified, and I think the person should be on it, even though they may not be a resident, for maybe a one-year term, since it's a vacancy, I'm inclined to say, if I think the person's qualified and do a good job, that maybe he or she should be on it. But it's subject to a one-year, because if there's somebody else who's interested in getting on it, who is a resident, who is a domicile here, who's interested, then I think we need to consider that. And I'm not wedded to somebody who's not a resident to remain on for a period of two years or three years or to renewing that person, because if there's somebody else who's qualified, who is a resident, who lives here, who's been here for 20-plus years and says, gee, I'm interested in getting involved, I think that's a fair consideration for that person. But I think that if there is an opening, and the person is not a domiciled here, doesn't live here, is interested, then I think, you know, if there's an opening, I'd consider putting that person on if they have qualifications. Didn't we run into an issue with the one-year at the last meeting? We found a problem with the one-year?
The bylaw may not be written that way?
It has to be whatever's in the law. I mean, I can run over and get them.
Everyone may be different.
Always. Actually, I think I have it, I think I have it on that.
I think we have to, I think what we have to discuss today is, do we want to make it a policy?
Waterways is a three-year term, sorry.
So do we actually want to say that... So do we actually want to say that here are the rules, and we're going to abide by these rules? Or do each one of us want to interpret the rules any way we want and vote for people accordingly? That may be the first question to ask. Do we want to formalize the process and say, "If you don't live in Cituate, you can't be on the committee unless there's a vacancy?" Or do we want to just say, I mean, everybody feels some degree of, you know, emotion towards this opinion and just vote for who you want? You know, if you think someone from Marshfield's doing a great job, then leave them on the committee. If you don't, then vote for somebody else. What's a thought on just a stricter policy? Because right now, there's no policy, right? That's kind of what we're talking about.
I think, again, we should defer to those who are residents and registered voters if you vote first, and then if there are no other choices, I would quit and out-of-town residents, absolutely not.
So you would say, yes, make a policy?
Yes.
What about you, Sean?
This is tough. I mean, we have people, I mean, I'd be inclined to go along with what Mara said and what everyone else said, but, you know, there are circumstances when you have real experts that might not live in this town. And, I mean, now, you know, he's got another unusual circumstance of being a police department and so forth, but...
It really doesn't pop up that much, except for Waterways.
Right.
You know, and that's because we're a boating community, and there's, we're, half of our, or a piece of our property, you know, is in Marshfield.
So I'm going to have to take a stand, and I'm going to probably say, leave a policy the way it is.
So do not make a policy.
Right.
What's your guys' thought?
Still, no, let me just jump in. Still, like you just said, anyone can vote any way they want. If, you know, so if that's the way it's going to go forward...
But if you make a policy, then you can't vote any way you want.
No, 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 no. But let's say, let's go down the path that we don't change anything. We know how Mara's going to vote for the next, you know, few years.
We do?
We do.
Yeah, we do, yeah. If you're not a resident, you're probably not going to get Mara's vote. So, I mean, but she doesn't have to say that, right? So, that's all.
All right. So one for a policy, one for out of policy.
What do you guys feel?
I mean, if we get into an issue where it was, you know, I think prioritizing a Cituate resident, yes, but absolutely...
Do you want a policy that says it?
That says prioritize?
Yeah. Or do you want to just make that just...
I don't really think it's necessary either.
Okay. So another no? John?
I'd say no. I'd say, I'm not ready to regulate it and put a policy, but I can tell you how I'm going to vote.
Well, it sounds...
I know exactly I'm going to vote, but I can tell you right now...
You want the taxpayers.
No, I want anybody from the town of Cituate who's domiciled here, who's interested in getting on the committee.
Especially when you're talking about a committee that has a very large enterprise fund that is managed. That really should be...
But we can look at that, though. We, I don't think, I mean, I don't, like Sean said, I don't think we actually have to have a policy in place where you're stuck by those lines where you have to stay.
It's your discretion. Leaves the board the discretion to decide what are the factors that are more important to each and every one of us. That's all.
And I don't disagree with that. And the other thing we have to remember is, anybody, these are open meetings. So you can go to the meeting, you can participate in the conversation, you may not be able to vote, but you can participate, listen, and be involved. Okay. So is that what we need to figure out now that we do not want to set a policy?
Yes. Also, we would need to change the town application, because it required, it says, registered voters and residents of the town on our town application, so we can go ahead and make that change. And you don't need to do that. I mean, given what you've discussed, then essentially, you don't need to vote anything because you're not changing anything.
Before we do that, I'm just going to open it up, because I know there's probably a couple of people here that want to speak.
Can I ask one question first?
Yeah.
So what is the issue that we got the information on, the associate members? We need clarification on that.
They're going to have to have a bylaw change, because it's completely vague and silent. It just says, "Associate Members." Associate Members. There's like nothing there that defines what an associate member is.
And this is really problematic, too, because, as I noted earlier, there's 12 associates. So you have nine members and 12 associates. You know, conservation can have two, the ZBA has two, clearly, that's a problem.
A problem with Waterways, not with the other ones?
Right. Right. Well, there isn't an issue, because the other ones are statutorily authorized. This is the only committee that even has the word "associates" in it, in our bylaws.
And I think it was probably just an effort to get people, you know, engaged in the process. I mean, these are all volunteers that have given their time and their expertise to help the town, so... Okay. So I'll open it up. Yes.
We also have a six-year rule that we need to consider, for people that have been on these committees for six years. That is a rule.
That is a rule. So there's a six-year rule where you are, if you've served six years, and there's been occasions where we let somebody stay on because there's no one else to do it...
Right.
...for a year, but other than that, the term is six years.
So next to all these renews, Lorraine...
Anybody who's been on six years.
Who...
I don't know. I'll have to go to the chair of the committee and find out.
I think that's going to be a report before we...
Vice Chair Sarah can speak to that.
Well, I don't, I'm not just referring to Waterways, I'm referring to all these committees where we have to reappoint or renew people. Is anywhere with the six-year rule applies?
That's a heavy...
Let me just say one other thing in addition to what Tony just said.
We in the past have left people on after six, and even if there have been applicants, if something's in the middle of a project. Okay? So...
Thanks.
Just, that's a...
If I may?
Say your name and address.
I'm Pete Toppin, 26 Clap Road, Vice Chair of the Waterways Commission. I'm in year seven. Okay? Last year, I expected to be excused after six years, and it was a surprise that you folks asked me to come back. Okay?
I can introduce myself. I did not know that you were past the term limit.
Yeah. I would also say, in the seven years that I was on the advisory committee, nobody asked me to step down. '85 to '94.
There's no, there's, advisory's appointed by the moderator...
Yeah.
...and three-year terms. You don't...
That's fine. I'm just giving you some history. Eight years in alternate energy. The town was perfectly willing to have a volunteer stay on. Just history. Okay? So you've brought up a number of issues this evening. We have a board of nine. We have a number of people stepping down. We have a number of openings that you need to fill. You have a number of people who are on the board who are non-residents that you could allow by grandfathering them, so we keep their input going forward. All right? So you have term limits, the potential of grandfathering. Brad White, who's a Marshfield resident, he's critical to our function with Waterways issues, okay? You have an associate member in Brian Cronin, who for the last four years has been working as an associate to help us put together regulations for moorings, okay? He also owns property in Amarak, so he is a taxpayer. All right? You have a potential chairman issue coming up, because I'm the vice chairman. I can't fill the chairman's role because I'm not local. I work in Medford. I get home at 7:00 o'clock at night. You can't have a board chairman in that role in this town. Can't happen. You have, as I understand it, two people who have said they would like to become chair. One of them is a non-resident. That's Fran McMillan.
And who are they? So, Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yeah.
You're speaking a lot of information that has not been shared with me. I don't know if it's been shared with the other board members, you know...
I'm sharing it. That's why I'm here.
Just names and stuff?
Names, so we can understand who we're looking at renewing.
Fran McMillan is a member of the board. Last year, you said he was conflicted. He could not vote on issues relative to the harbor, because he's a non-resident, and because he had a business in town. All right?
It had nothing to do, it had to do with the business, because his business deals with moorings, which deal with the harbor, which deals with the committee that deals with the...
Same issue applies.
Excuse me, Peter, that deals with the issue that your board deals with the money. So you can't have somebody getting benefits as a mooring person who's getting paid by the committee. That's the conflict.
Yeah. I understand that. I, believe me, I fully understand that.
And to have him as chairman would be a problem, because then your issues with respect to the moorings, he can't, he can't table it and control it.
I agree. I'm simply stating what, to me, has been obvious since the discussion started, okay? The other person that's interested and said he was willing to step forward as chairman is Keith Waylow. He is also in the mooring business. So as a board, you have to deal with that situation. All right? And frankly, I don't know who else I would go to as a chair within the people we work with at the moment. There are a number of people be fully capable. We haven't had that discussion.
Well, like any other committee, you vote, and you pick somebody, and they're the chair.
So the residency issue, I was watching at home tonight when I got back from the hospital. I was looking at Ed Gibbons' interview, okay? Ed was an excellent assistant harbor master. He's now on the police force. He's interested in becoming a member of Waterways, and I think he would be superlative in that role. But then you throw in this potential police marine unit thing, which I'm not familiar with, which sounded to me like it was a complicating factor. All right? So the board has a lot on its plate, and frankly, I think for you to try to go through that dynamic and make a vote tonight on who you're going to allow or not going to allow is problematic. All right? But we have issues which are coming forward to Waterways at the next meeting. And I can't determine when that next meeting is going to be until I know who my board members are and I can canvass them on when our next meeting is going to be.
We won't be voting tonight.
Okay. Because in theory, we have a meeting on July 15th. All right? In theory. But we can't nail that down, because the vice chair, who can't become the chair, can't be there that night. All right? So we're in a disarray on the Waterways Commission until such time as you folks appoint a board. And at that point, the board can get together and decide where they're going in terms of chairmanship. So I'd simply, I've presented the things which I see as issues, and if there's any way it can help you, let me know.
I think, and then I'll open up you guys, this is a complicated board. There are going to be changes, right, there, because there's issues that are going to be voted. There's people whose term limit is up, there's people who don't live in town that people may not vote for, there's people that are leaving the committee, there's a bunch of people that want to be on the committee. So clearly, there's going to be some sort of shuffling of something or other. But one thing I will say is that everybody can still participate in the meetings. You know, hopefully, if your, if your term limit's up and you're voted off the committee, you'll still go to the meetings and give your input and have your experience and still help this be a great committee and a great Waterway system. So, you know, I don't know how much the voting aspect, I don't know how often you have a five-to-four vote. You know, I don't know how much you're not on the same page in terms of topics. So that's, you know, it may not be as big of a factor as we're thinking it might be. Any other comments from...
Just a, just a quick, more observation than anything. So you basically went through who, the existing people now, and said that really, there isn't anybody who doesn't have, in our mind, a conflict to become chair. So the only people that you see that possibly might fill the role would be brand-new people.
Or existing people who are non-residents and have been on the board as either associates or members for the last four years.
Well, again, we don't have a problem with the non-residency thing with the board. We only have a problem with the conflict, correct?
I don't know how anyone's going to vote.
Okay.
I don't know...
Can we get a list of the entire...
Yeah. Yeah. This committee's going to need some, a little bit of research to see who's on it, who are the associates, how many years have they been on? You know, we're going to have to figure this out before we vote.
Yeah. My personal opinion, and I've only lived here for 40 years, okay? My personal opinion is, you have two people who are non-residents who are on the board who, if asked, could step forward and take chair. They aren't involved in local business, so they're not conflicted.
Thank you. Um, White.
Thanks, Pete. Good evening. Brad White, Marshfield. I have a question on the term limit. Does the first three years as associate member contribute to that six years? Like, for instance, I was a three-year associate, then a three-year voting member, so you'd have to have two stints of three-year voting member to term limit out. Okay. I concur with Pete about grandfathering the folks that want to continue. We have a lot of things, four pages of Excel projects, half of which are complete, half of which are in progress. I also think that, my experience has been over the last six years, is that the folks that go from voting member to non-voting, because either they term limit out or retire down, don't come to meetings. They just don't. So, you know, the esprit de corps of the group is still there, but without the voting power, people just don't attend. I've seen it. And, you know, they might show up once a year, but you need somebody 11 times a year, at least. So those are my contributions, and thank you.
Can I ask you why you're not on the Marshfield Board?
Because the Cituate Board was more vibrant, had a lot more on its plate, and Marshfield was just starting out six years ago. I've been asked to be on the Marshfield Board. I can't do both effectively with my available time, and if I was not on the Cituate Board, then I would probably, if asked, go to Marshfield. But my, I grew up in Cituate, I'm very familiar with the Waterways, and I use the Waterways for my business as well. It's not conflicting to the board. And I know the folks in Cituate. Like, I've been in Marshfield for 25 years, so I was asked to do both boards at the same time, and I just couldn't do it. You know, I don't want to bite off more than I can chew.
Do I still have a vote in Cituate?
I do. Three now. Small, medium, and medium-plus.
Thanks, Frank.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, that being said, we have decided not to set a policy, so we don't need to vote on that. So now, we'll move to one-day beer and wine license. So the first one is... Yep. Ellen McKenzie Catering.
Move the board to grant Ellen McKenzie a one-day beer and wine license for an event to be held at the Cituate Maritime Center on June 27, 2015, from 1:00 to 5:00 P.M. Secondly, hospitable hostess, a one-day beer and wine license for an event to be held at the Cituate Maritime Center on July 11, 2:00 to 6:00 P.M. And lastly, hospitable hostess, a one-day beer and wine license for an event to be held at the Situate Maritime Center on July 11, from 7:30 to 10:00 p.m.
Second?
Second by Mr. O'Toole. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? It is unanimous. Okay, so we already did the outdoor entertainment license, so now we get to the vote for the annual appointments. I would recommend that we do this at our next meeting. I think we've got a lot to figure out. I mean, we probably could do a couple of them, but let's not, you know, next meeting we should run right through them all and, and do them. So if you came tonight, you know, this is no indication as to whether or not you're going to make the committee. I think we just need to get our arms around it.
So, Lorraine, at the next meeting, allow 40 minutes for annual appointments on the agenda.
Can I ask a question about the last, I know, can I step back? The last item we were talking about?
Yep.
So I just want to make sure that it's clear to everybody. So we're not going to vote a policy, correct? So that that means that as we look at individuals for certain positions, we would either vote for them or against them or whatever, based upon our own thing. So that releases the, the, in other words, if there's somebody that's on the committee already, that's a non-resident, they could become chairman without any of our impact because they're already on the board, correct? So that's what I was trying to think when you were saying that, I was like...
No, it's true.
I'm like, wait, they could actually...
So I guess what we could do is if somebody was inclined, they could say, although Mr. O'Toole isn't up for reelection this year, he's a non-resident, I'd like to discuss whether he should stay or be removed from the committee.
Yeah, it's, it's up to the committee to make that choice.
Up to us.
Well, they're both up for renewal.
No, what I'm saying is...
No, if there's somebody that's in the middle of a term right now, that we're not going to be appointing for a couple of years, let's say as an example, and they want to make that person a chair, they can do that. Because we don't have, we're not going to cut their term short, we don't have that kind of a...
Well, you could.
We don't have a policy on non-residents. I'm not an attorney.
No, I guess, I guess when I'm confused, in other words, if they're, if they're not for reelection, or up for renewal...
And they're a non-resident.
And they're a non-resident, then when they, their committee, board, commission meets, they're going to vote whoever's going to be the chair.
Correct.
And it is conceivable that somebody who's a non-resident can be voted chair.
So the question is, could we, even though their term was not up, say, you know, we do not want Mr. White on the board because he's a non-resident.
No, we don't have a policy. We don't have a non-resident policy.
So we have to set that policy to do that.
No, you can't. The charter won't allow you to cut someone mid-term.
No, because we've decided not to have a policy for non-residents.
It does, it's not even that. The charter, when we appoint these people to a three-year, they're appointed for the term, which is why I mentioned about the one-year. You'd have to have a bylaw review, which if somebody gets nominated, the bylaw review committee could maybe take a look at that in the future. Not looking at anybody in particular, but...
And when that particular person comes back around, if the, if the board of selectmen decides not to vote that person back in, then that obviously becomes...
It's when they go off.
Yeah, it becomes their, their...
So, yes.
So that, I mean, I just want to clarify that because I was very confused and I'm sure a lot of people out there that...
So I guess right now, if one of these other non-residents that is in the middle of their term...
Correct.
Is on Waterways, he'll continue to be on Waterways.
And they could very well become chair.
He could become the chair.
Now, I'm not sure, can an associate become chair? I don't think so.
No, they're not, they're not voting member.
It has to be one of the voting members.
It has to be a voting member.
So that's, that's why I say, yeah.
So the only other thing, I'd like to just quit, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, it's the general room, we just discussed this, but I don't know.
So Marty brought up a good point that, seeing as we did not set a policy that non-residents could not be on the committee, if somebody is a non-resident and they're still currently in the middle of their term on the committee, then they will continue to be on the committee. So if Bill lives in Marshfield and he's on year two of three years, he will not be removed. So he will be on there and he will be able to be chair if so voted.
Or the board votes the chair, which is not tradition, but is in your purview.
Brad White is up for reappointment.
So he's a little bit tricky situation.
Year three of six, I guess, right?
Year three of three. Now you're up.
Three of three, right, and four.
He'd be up for your second three.
Brian Cronin, who is an associate, wants to become a full-time appointee and there are openings. But he is, although a property taxpayer, not a resident.
So, so regardless of whether you're an associate or a first-time person, the board will decide who fills those slots.
That is correct.
So there's no, there's no pecking order for being an associate and moving off, although it may traditionally happen that way, that's not the way it is done. So regardless of whether you're up for renewal, regardless of whether you're an associate or not, there, there's an applicant of, or a pool of 20 people going for three slots is the way it'll end up here.
If we have a board appointed, that board has a meeting and determines their chairman.
Yep.
Okay? That's the basic. Now, the problem then comes is the two people who have stated an interest in becoming chair are conflicted by your definition of last year.
Then they'll fit somebody else. I mean, these are just people that you think should be chair. You know, somebody else, person number seven may want to be chair.
We could appoint a brand-new person and that person would be chair.
That's correct.
So the committee will figure it out.
Yeah.
And if they can't figure it out, then they'll come back to us. Yeah, good point. CPC does it every year.
No, they appointed a brand-new person and that person was the chair.
The current chair, right?
But it's only a one-year term, so every year they have to.
Yeah, that's another story we'll have next week.
The understanding currently is any associate member could become a voting member in their second three years, and that's kind of what the pecking order discussion has been. I think that if that goes away, the associate member's subscription will dry up because they want the ability to be able to be impactful with their vote. So if you can say, I can pick this person, this person, or a third person, I think that whole population base will shrink.
Possibly. But that's just the way it is. And that's the way it's always been. You know, we can, you can put any applicant going in any slot.
I don't think we know that. I think it's because we don't know because there's no written job description of what an associate is, and I think it's a good opportunity.
Can I just say something?
Yes.
What, Brad, the thing is this, so let's say, just say, for an example, you had an associate member who'd been on there three years and they're going for a full-time position, if you will, but you have, we have another candidate who's very, very qualified, who's never been on, and we would have to say, geez, we'd have to decide between the qualifications. That person being an associate doesn't necessarily give them more qualifications than somebody else who may be trying to get on?
Comments would be, for instance, Brian Cronin, who we're talking about, who was a mill resident, Situate landowner, and an associate, would love to be a voting member. And real qualified, then every single meeting is on the heartbeat of every one of those four pages of Excel projects. It would be a disservice to the committee if he was leapfrogged over by somebody just because, for whatever reason, however arbitrary it may be. So I think that the, it's like JV team, varsity team type of thing, there's no real delineation, but people really want to get on the voting team. And when you get those four, six-year associate members, I think it would dissuade them from continuing if they didn't have that option of being selected first.
Well, from what Tricia said, there's 12, how many associates? 12 associates.
I mean, and this is, gets back to the charter. I mean, the town is unique in that the charter usually specifies that members of board and committees have to be registered voters. That's very common, so we're unique in that. There are no associates allowed by statute in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, except for the four that I mentioned earlier. Except our bylaws says Waterways Commission and associates. So the tradition and all that is just that, it's tradition, it's not vested in anything that's documented, it's just tradition. Now, the, the premise for having associates, which you alluded to, Mr. White, is that, and this is why in the Mass General Laws, it's the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission, the ZBA, is that these are very technical, complex, highly regulated by statute positions that take some while to be familiar with. The Wetlands Protection Act, the zoning act, those kinds of things. So the theory is, is that people go and sort of mini training ground, to your point, so that when there is a vacancy, somebody is just not saying, what's the Wetlands Protection Act? What do I do? But in the particular case of the Waterways, that's unique to our bylaws in Situate, rather than having two or three people to slide into that vacancy, that would occur with your nine, what do you have, three openings every year or something? It's sort of just by people's interest and feeling of inclusiveness, I don't know, there's now 12.
Well, I would share one thing with you. If you did an attendance check on the 12, it's probably really three.
Okay, yeah.
Maybe we need to do that because we're pretty strict about attendance and I can tell you, Peter probably can say, we have a lot of names, but some of them have jerseys.
So, Lorraine, if, if we could get a list of everybody that's on the Waterways Committee...
Which I have.
Right. That's going to have, here's the nine voting members, here's the 12 associate members...
Yeah, you can, I did this.
Right. And here's the, the four or five new applicants that want to be considered also. And then what, if we can get that earlier, then each one of us can do whatever due diligence we want to figure out who...
If I could work with Pete with that, because I need to get the attendance sheet back for Waterways for the associates too now, I guess.
Well, I think, you know, Peter and Dick could give us a sense of who's showing up for the, I mean, somebody came today.
Lindsey actually is going to have the roll call because she gets the sheet. Okay, our secretary.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to say, we've got 12 associates. I've only been there seven years, I didn't know we had 12 associates, so, you know.
So that's what we would consider and we'll talk to, to the chair. The other thing we do know is who's been on there for more than six years, so that we can figure out all these decisions.
And Ms. Curran, if there's somebody from Situate that you'd like to maybe consider for, for Marshfield, I'd be happy to take that over and talk with Marshfield and say, this person, I might be interested because I think it's a good idea.
Great. Okay, thanks, guys. So we'll deal with that next meeting. The next one is discussion vote for a Hockers pedal permit for JP's Hot Dog.
Yes. We have a note for the board.
Right, so this is some, there was a, a discussion at the last meeting that questioned a lot of things, but one of them were the health issues. Lorraine spoke with them about health, they wrote us a letter saying that they're going to go through all their normal processes of due diligence to make sure that it's done properly, as they always do, and we can go from there. So there's really no discussion in terms of that unless someone wants to...
No, we've got it, I've been, I've worked on this earlier today and there's some things that they've, the board health is still working on, so it's going to be contingent upon their finalization.
Yeah, as they are.
Yeah.
So if you want to make a motion?
If I can find, if somebody can find...
Page 106.
Move the board selectmen grant JP Hot Dog's a Hockers pedalist license, same seasonal until October, from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. in accordance with the Selectment Policy Number 53-12, inspection by the board health.
Second?
Second by Mr. O'Toole. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye. Obstain, I'll abstain, Lorraine on that.
One abstention by Mr. Danny. Four, zero unanimous. And the next one is Dell's Lemonade.
Move the board selectmen vote to grant Dell's Lemonade a Hockers pedalist license seasonally until October, from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. in accordance with the Selectment Policy 53-12, inspection by the board health.
Second. Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous, five, zero. Great, so now the, um, next item is review and discuss the liaison positions.
30th, October 1st.
Does everyone have a copy of the...
To make the list.
I would, I would recommend that if you want to do something different, change it. If you don't, don't. But let's, no, it doesn't hurt to do something different, and if you want to mix it up, then let's just not go status quo if you really want to do something different. So, why don't I just run through them?
You've got obligatory obligations that you have to do.
So I have to do...
They've already been changed, I know.
You could do advisory and you'd do...
Plymouth County.
Oh, not that, the, what's the other one? The street acceptance.
Yeah, street acceptance. I have to do advisory?
I think...
Could I just ask a question? Is that...
I have a tablet. On tablet. Do you want me to make a little copy?
I have mine.
I just need to just...
I have it.
Street acceptance, you know, and I mentioned this before, and I don't care.
How the chair gets a copy?
We should try to have something.
Does the chair gets a copy?
I don't care, you know.
They are asked by the bylaws, that's the difference.
Right, so street acceptance and...
I think it's street acceptance and advisory.
I don't think it's advisory, but it's the point.
Street acceptance has advisory, chairman.
Yes.
Yes.
Plymouth County advisor.
Who else? Street acceptance.
Traffic rules and regulations.
Yeah.
No, not traffic rules, street acceptance.
Just street acceptance.
Yeah, street acceptance.
Street, yeah, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So this, I just want to throw them, if you want to do it, raise your hand or say something.
There's a couple that are missing from there, so I just, you might have some more next week, next meeting.
So advisory committees. I can, the chair typically does it, I don't mind doing it unless somebody else wants to.
Chair does it.
All right. Affordable Housing Trust.
I'll do that. Actually, I know somebody should do it because I'm the trustee.
That's me. I'll keep it.
So Maura will do that one. Animal Control Board.
I have that.
You want to keep doing it? Computerification? I'm on that. I can't do that.
You're doing some heavy lifting here, my friend.
Can you?
We'll continue with computerification, thank God.
That's the Joe Norton...
Donna Banger. Board of Health? Sean's done it for like 30 years and I know he'll continue to do it, but does anyone else like the Board of Health?
Love the Board of Health, but let Sean keep doing it.
I know, I did good on the pump station there, so.
I did, oh my God.
No, I'll keep it. If someone wants to play on...
Bylaw, that was John last year, anyone want that?
I'll take it.
Another heavy lift.
They don't meet.
I'm sorry, Affordable Housing Trust is the one, right? Is that right?
Correct.
Cable television, which...
I have that.
Anyone else want to do cable? All right, Marty? Capital planning? I'll do that. I'll continue to do that, I don't do much. Commission on Disabilities, John?
Sure.
All right, so here's one, CPC. So that's, it's a lot of work. Marty had it last year, if somebody else, this is one of those ones where you can mix it up, I think, I think it's good for other people to be involved.
Want to trade something, Marty? Do you want a break? Oh, you want that one?
No, I don't care, either, doesn't matter, I'm just trying to give it to you.
It's up to you, Marty.
It's up to you, you haven't done it, whatever.
Doesn't matter to me, if somebody wants it, you're welcome to it.
I think Maura wants it.
Maura, you want to do CPC?
I'm not going to take it unless I give up somebody, because I have Planning Board and CONCOM that I...
Do you want to do one of those two, Marty? Planning or CONCOM or...
Coastal Advisory.
I mean, I've just, I just got my feet with, with CPC, so I mean, we really haven't had that many meetings. They had their application process and stuff, so, I mean, I haven't had it for that long.
But you want to do it again?
I'll just keep doing it.
Okay. Conservation?
I'll keep it.
Council on Aging?
I'll keep it.
Boy, my theory's really working out.
Yeah, I think we're just wasting time.
Economic Development. Somebody else do that.
I'll do it.
Good.
Financial Forecast, I'll do that. Historical Commission?
I'll do that.
Housing Authority?
I'll keep that.
Planning Board? Do you want to get rid of that? Anyone want to do Planning? It's a lot of work for CONCOM and...
I'll do Planning.
You want to do Planning?
Big year for Planning.
And you have to do Advisory, right, Tony? Plymouth County?
Yeah, I'm on that one.
Have you gone to that meeting yet?
Got postponed to this week, 25th.
Who's the chair, huh, Fred? Is he?
Buildings, Public Building Commission? Does that have to be the chair?
No, if you want it, you can have it.
No, if you want, you can have it.
You want to keep doing that?
I'll keep doing it.
When do they meet?
Every other Tuesday.
Public Facilities.
No. Public Facilities, Master Plan Steering Committee?
That's moved now.
It's not?
But it's...
I'll keep my name on it.
Replaced by the Adaptive Reuse Building Committee.
I'll do the adapted reuse, yeah.
Just double on that.
Keep it if I could.
Yeah, you know what, Sean, why don't I go, I've been doing a lot with them too, why don't we piggyback on that one, though? Renewable Energy, do they?
They still can together.
Now that we're buying our streetlights, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, School Committee, Sean and I have done that for the last...
We have always done it, though, so, I mean, if you need, just let me know.
Will somebody else want a, Marty, you, well, I'm...
So many people want to do it, Brian, I saw Stuart today. What do I do to get that going?
Unless you want to...
Nope, no.
All right, so, why don't Maura and I do that one? Chamber of Commerce, anybody?
I'll just keep it unless somebody wants it.
All right, Veterans?
I'll keep it, and we got to get something going with that, so I would like to keep it.
South Shore Coalition?
Where's Ann? Ann, where'd you go?
Cut out early tonight.
I'm going.
All right, I'll keep it.
The webpage?
What is that?
We have a town webpage.
What do you do with the webpage, Tony? What do you do?
Well, we meet every 13th Thursday. I mean, we really don't get together.
I'm not aware of that.
Yeah, is that even a...
I don't think it's, I think initially with Tom Rose back then, but that's changed.
I'll take it though.
Bill does it all.
No, I don't appoint a liaison, I've been here six years, it's the first I've heard of it.
What, the webpage?
It hasn't kept, yeah.
It needs to be a...
I've never seen it on there before.
It's not a committee.
Traffic rules? Sean, you want to keep that?
Sure.
Water resource?
Sure, I'll keep that.
Waterways?
Rick, I mean Sean.
Sean, you want to keep that?
Yes.
And ZBA? John?
I'll keep it unless somebody wants it.
Well, there's basically no changes.
There's two more that are on this list that I can think of, Coastal Advisory Commission and the Beach Study Committee.
I'll take the beach. I'll take the coastal advisory too, or if anybody wants to piggyback on that.
I'll do it. Or we could do it together, John.
Yeah.
So, which one are you doing together, coastal?
Sure.
Yeah.
All right, and Beach?
Study Committee.
Beach Study Committee.
That's you.
Who's going to do that?
John.
I'll do it. All right, so John and I will do the beach study.
Did we get anybody that sent in applications for that yet?
Yes.
Oh, you did?
They put it on the 7/7.
For the beach study or for...
Yep.
Talent yet?
So, did you get, if, anything you missed, we'll figure out, but it's mostly the same.
We're going to need a cultural...
The Beach Study Committee?
I wouldn't say it's more...
Cultural District Committee if we get one, right? Designation, that's something that might happen.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, you have charges approved for the other two already, this one we haven't been, but we'll need to do that.
It's something in the future.
Yeah, hopefully.
Okay, Other Business, we need to set a date for the Homaroc meeting. We're going to do it on Off Tuesday.
Now, a lot of the questions and things that have been coming, is there a way we can address a lot of those before this meeting?
Tricia and I met and we went over them and we've got to, a lot of the questions have been answered in the past and a lot of the questions aren't answerable. So, we really have to focus the meeting down on specific areas that can actually be, that are going to be productive to discuss. So, Tricia and I are working on that. When do you, you want to, how much longer do you want?
Respond to them initially, though.
I think when the board can schedule it, yeah. I, I have Public Building Commission every other Tuesday, so, I don't know what time you're planning on meeting. Public Building Commission meets at 7:00, so if we could do it at 6-ish, at least I could be there for part of it. I'm also sensitive to asking a bunch of department heads to come to the meeting. I think it can focus, like we talked about, more on the board having the meeting with some answers as opposed to staff time.
Okay, so do you want to meet at, what's our schedule for July?
Seven.
7/7 and 7/21. So, do you want to do 7/28?
Yeah.
At 6 o'clock? And we'll just go from 6 to 7:30?
Or seven, there's a meeting in here, even though it's your, well, Public Building Commission meets here because there's...
Want to meet at 5:30?
15 people.
Want to meet at 5:30?
If that's a matter of the board, that's fine.
If you can't meet, I mean, we don't need everybody.
No, that's fine.
All right, so let's meet at 5:30 to 7:00.
Are we meeting here?
Yeah, on the 18th, and then we'll...
The 28th you said.
July 20th.
Not the 18th.
Right.
And I'll, Lorraine, I'll get in touch with Mr. Hughes and Mr. Brian.
Okay.
Correspondence? I don't think there were any.
No, there was none.
And then, well, we'll just see if anybody has any other business before we adjourn?
Yeah, just that, I have something, whatever.
Go ahead.
The Senior Art Show in Salem is this Saturday, 10/7, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Situate Senior Center, 27 Brook Street. It's basically 20 senior artists, paintings, photos, different things like that, and a percentage of the sales will benefit the COA, Situate COA. And that's all I have.
John, anything or...
No, that was it.
What?
I just want to say thank you to you, Tony, and I watched the coastal summit, if you will, from the DEP and CZM from last Monday. It looked like it was well-attended. I bring information, especially if people want to watch it, if they missed it. I'm going to tell you. Well done. Thank you for seeing that.
No?
Actually, I did have one. Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say again, thanks to Sand Hill's General Store for actually painting the lighthouse white this past Saturday. If you go to the lighthouse, you'll notice it looks really freshened up, there's no spalling, I guess you could say, of the paint, chipping and everything, it's all brand-new. And all that was dedicated by Sherwin-Williams, and I forgot the, that was the paint store, and then, I'm not sure of the company that donated the lift, but they had an electronic lift that went all the way up to paint the whole building, and of course, Sand Hill's General Store who sponsored it, so, phenomenal, looks great, so...
Professional painters?
Professional, yeah.
Yeah, Dan McGowan's.
The owner of the store owns a paint company out of Watertown, so, he had his guys come down and paint the whole thing for free.
Marty, what did that save us?
Oh, it's got to be more money.
How many grand?
They power washed it, they did it two coats, that lift alone's about 1,500 bucks, you know.
Shouldn't we write, at least write him a letter and add the cost at least?
To everybody, Sherwin-Williams as well as the other, yeah.
I asked them whether or not they're going to go out and start painting mine it light or scrubbing it, they said they'd pass on that one.
Who owns that?
John.
Yeah, bought it for a dollar.
Is that your new office?
It's my office hours.
So, the only thing I'll add is, there was a great turnout to the Coastal Zone Management, the two speakers were phenomenal, one from CZM and one from Mass Park and DEP. There were probably about 140 people there, I would say.
130, yep, that counted.
And everybody was addressed, everybody had questions, she did a whole presentation in terms of what's going on, and it was, it was focused mostly on Homaroc, and those are the type of things that Tricia was talking about before in terms of just getting information out to people and allowing them to participate in the process, so, you know, to get those guest speakers, these were two pretty high people in their, in their organizations for the state, so that was great. What else? The only other thing, I guess, school's ending, you know, school, the last day of school is Friday, so hopefully my kids are studying for their finals, and all the stuff that's been going on in schools, I know there's Jenkins, last-day stuff, and what else?
Gates.
You're going all this stuff. So, so, thanks to all the teachers and all the administration there and for all these events, it's so great, and I know the kids are anxious for summer. Sports programs, I don't know, last meeting we talked about it, but we had some really great spring sports. Boys and girls tennis went very far in the state tournament and the great boys' baseball won divisional teams and lost to the number-one seed in the semifinals. Lacrosse did very well, I think they lost to Hingham, but, but they went very far in also, so we had a really good, good season there, so everyone should be proud of that. And now we're off to the beach. So, with that, most new adjourned and signed documents?
So moved.
Second?
Second by Mr. O'Toole. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Tonight, folks, happy Fourth.